Okay, welcome to the Monday, January 13th Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. Glad that you are all here. I'm gonna do a quick introduction of people here on the dais and any elected representatives we have in the room, and then we will get started with our opening ceremony. So, I'm gonna start over here to my left is Caleb Snell, he's our Teacher of the Year. We have Catherine Moore, Board Member, Sam Treadaway, Board Member, our Superintendent, Dr. John Kapicki, myself, Rob Walter, his Chair, our Vice Chair Greg Mills, our Board Member Pam Escobar, and Board Member Melanie Freeman. Our SRO tonight is gonna be Lauren Elliott, so thank you for her for being here as well. And I saw some elected officials in the room, so thank you for coming to our meeting. I've got our newly-elected Representatives, Mr. Jonathan Allman and Brian Etcheverio. Thank you and welcome. And then we have, we have our County Commissioners, we have the Chair Chris Meesmer is here, thank you. Laura Lindsey who's the Vice Chair, and Larry Pittman. So, I think that's all our elected officials, so thank you for that. And with that, we're gonna start with our presentation of colors, so please stand.
Presenting our nation's colors tonight are members of the J.M. Robinson High School Air Force, J.R.O.T.C., and their personnel includes Cadet First Lieutenant Journey Powell, Cadet Captain Adam Brantley, Cadet Technical Sergeant Carlos Osorio, and Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jose Wira Ocampo.
Hold. Freeze it. Colors.
Post.
Case. Over. Art.
Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem, we're members of the J.M. Robinson High School Band, and their personnel includes Cyprian Welsh, Alejandro Rivera Suazo, Jake Bridolo, Ritty Barua, and Elijah Bitu. The Director of the J.M. Robinson Band Program is Mr. Greg Dills. Thank you.[296.16][296.16](applause)
You may be seated. The Board Member's first item here is to set our agenda, so I'll need a motion and a second to set our agenda.
I'd like to, we've got several people speaking tonight on the issue of the program choice, so I would like to move that to action so that we can consider their input before we take a vote on that one.
Then it will no longer be consent, we will add it to our action agenda. I need a number. 11.04? Okay, with that modification, I need a motion and a second to adopt our agenda for tonight. Motion by Mr. Treadaway, second by Ms. Freeman, all in favor say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes, we have our agenda, and we're gonna move on to our recognitions. So, I've got Mr. Phil Fur coming to the podium, and he's gonna go through our Impact Through Education Awards for this month.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kapicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Carl A. Fur Elementary School and Mount Pleasant Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable Representatives Lauren Barclough and Emily Satterly to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we continue our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support, and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce and to the Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. May I have the Carl A. Fur Elementary Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Carl A. Fur is Jasleen Acosta. Jasleen, please come forward with your family.[442.69][442.69](applause) Jasleen is an exceptional student who exemplifies hard work, responsibility, and kindness in all that she does. She cares deeply for those around her, always attentive to their needs, and eager to lend a helping hand. Jasleen approaches every challenge, even the most difficult, with determination and a positive attitude, consistently demonstrating her commitment to learning. A natural leader, Jasleen's kindness and diligence inspire those around her. She has built strong, meaningful relationships with both her peers and teachers, making her a trusted friend and role model in the classroom. Jasleen's sweet and caring nature, coupled with her hard-working spirit, make her a shining example of leadership and perseverance. We're proud to honor Jasleen for her outstanding character, dedication, and positive influence she brings to our school community. Congratulations Jasleen, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Carl A. Our next honoree from Carl A. Fur is Leila Kalsi. Leila, please come forward with your family. Leila is an exceptional student who embodies responsibility, kindness, and dedication in all that she does. Her ever-present smile and cheerful demeanor brighten the day for everyone around her, adults and peers alike. Leila's reliability and confidence allow her to tackle any task with remarkable competence, and she consistently goes above and beyond to help others. On a daily basis, Leila demonstrates respect, diligence, and an unwavering willingness to lend a hand. Her hard-working nature shines through in every action, and she assists her peers without ever needing to be asked. Leila's positive attitude and steadfast commitment make her a true role model for her classmates, setting an expiring example for others to follow. We're proud to recognize Leila for her outstanding contributions and the meaningful impact she has on our school community. Congratulations, Leila, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Carl A. Also from Carl A. Fur is Support Staff Member Mary Ace. Ms. Ace, please come forward with your family.[667.00][667.00](applause) Ms. Ace is a cornerstone of our school community, known for her unwavering dedication and professionalism. She provides invaluable support to both teachers and the students she works with, always approaching her role with love, respect, and care. While Mary may be quiet, her actions speak volumes. She is a hard worker who consistently goes above and beyond her normal duties, always ready to jump in and ask how she can help. She not only supports her assigned students, but also assists other TAs and teachers whenever needed. Mary's ability to connect with students, build meaningful one-on-one relationships, and ask thoughtful questions to better understand their needs ensures that she makes a lasting impact. Her reliability, quiet strength, and amazing attitude truly set her apart as an indispensable asset to our school. Congratulations, Mary, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Carl A. Fur Elementary
There we go. One, two, three. I got it, congratulations.[769.12][769.12](applause)
And finally, from Carl A. Fur is Teacher Brittany Bryce. Ms. Bryce, please come forward with your family.[780.00][780.00](applause) Ms. Bryce's commitment to student well-being and her leadership in MTSS have been instrumental in fostering a safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment. Through initiatives like the Calming Corner, which provides students with a space to self-regulate, and the Price Card, which motivates and rewards positive behavior, Brittany has enhanced the school experience for students. She also plays a key role in supporting teachers by collaborating with them to develop strategies that address both individual and school-wide needs. Her expertise in analyzing both academic and behavioral student data has been pivotal in identifying trends, addressing challenges, implementing targeted interventions, and ensuring that every student has the opportunity to succeed. Brittany's unwavering dedication, versatility, and innovative approach to problem-solving have made her a vital part of our school community. Congratulations, Brittany, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Carl A. We will now continue with our January Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming Mount Pleasant Middle School. May I have the Mount Pleasant Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School is Josiah De La Rosa. Josiah is an incredible eighth-grade student at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Josiah serves as an Office Assistant, Peer Mediator, and is a member of the Mount Pleasant Track Team. However, what truly sets Josiah apart from others is his positivity. You will not find Josiah without a smile on his face. His kindness and desire to connect with those around him inspires others to give their best effort. His commitment to academic excellence is equally impressive. Josiah approaches his studies with passion and determination, always seeking to deepen his understanding of the material. He does not shy away from challenges and pushes his peers through his hard work and perseverance. Josiah is a shining example of what it means to be a positive role model and student. Congratulations, Josiah, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant is Avery Kirk. Avery, please come forward with your family.[1034.83][1034.83](applause) Avery is a remarkable eighth-grade student at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Avery participates in a variety of activities at MPMS, where she is a member of the Beta Club, cheerleading team, volleyball team, and is a talented flutist in the Mount Pleasant Middle School Band. What truly sets Avery apart is her unwavering kindness and willingness to help others. She is a welcoming and supportive presence, always ready to cheer on her peers and encourage them to do their best. Her strong work ethic and intellectual curiosity are evident in her dedication to all her subjects, where she strives for excellence and puts forth her absolute best effort on every assignment and project, whether it's pushing beyond her limits to achieve success or consistently demonstrating discipline and determination. Avery exemplifies what it means to be a student leader and a role model. Congratulations, Avery, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Next, from Mount Pleasant Middle is Staff Member Shannon Honeycutt. Ms. Honeycutt, please come forward with your family.[1140.08][1140.08](applause) Ms. Honeycutt serves as the School Treasurer at Mount Pleasant Middle School and has worked with Cabarrus County Schools for more than 17 years. Within the school, Ms. Honeycutt is the go-to person for a wide variety of projects and tasks, and she is always looking for ways she can help others. She arrives early each day to ensure all positions are filled and that the school's finances are always in order. Ms. Honeycutt seeks out creative ways to ensure all feel welcomed at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Even if it is the first time a substitute has been to the school, she makes them feel like a member of the Tiger family. Beyond her job duties, Ms. Honeycutt has an incredible heart for the community, students, staff, and history of Mount Pleasant. She is a true Tiger, and we're fortunate to have her as a part of Mount Pleasant Middle School. Congratulations, Shannon, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant
I got it, congratulations.[1234.15][1234.15](applause)
And finally, from Mount Pleasant is Teacher Melody Quick. Ms. Quick, please come forward with your family.[1245.73][1245.73](applause) Ms. Quick serves as a teacher in our Learning Connections Classroom. She has been with Cabarrus County Schools for 18 years and has served as a Teacher Assistant, Bus Driver, Classroom Teacher, and has been recognized as Cabarrus County E.C. Teacher of the Year. Ms. Quick is an incredible leader in helping students with autism have success in school. She collaborates with teachers throughout the school to ensure that her students' needs are being met, while also finding innovative ways to continually improve her teaching skills. This school year, Ms. Quick has not only been an excellent teacher in her classroom, but has organized a school-wide toy drive for kids impacted by Hurricane Helene in western North Carolina, is coaching the school's Vex Robotics Team, and has led an initiative to fully integrate her Learning Connections Classroom into a general education classroom setting. Ms. Quick is an awesome advocate for students and an incredible asset to the Mount Pleasant Middle School community. Congratulations, Melody, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant This concludes our Impact Awards presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Fur. We'll move on to our next item, which is 4.02, Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month, and we have Dr. Michael Williams, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kapicki, and to our viewing audiences, both here and to those watching the livestream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month for January. We always want to begin by expressing our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hilbisch Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month for January is Quinn Johnston, a Social Studies Teacher at Roberta Road Middle School. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Johnston, his family, and any members of the Roberta Road Administrative Team in attendance to please come forward.[1409.36][1409.36](applause) Mr. Johnston received multiple nominations for this award from fellow staff members at Roberta Road. Tonight, I would like to share one of those nominations submitted by a fellow Roberta Road's teacher. Mr. Johnston consistently exemplifies what it means to be an effective teacher through his daily instructional practices and admirable ability to develop lasting relationships with students. His lessons challenge students to think critically and to collaborate with one another. His expectations for students are high, and his control over the classroom environment is one that many teachers can use as a model for their own educational practices. Mr. Johnston is a leader in every aspect imaginable and serves as an outlet to provide effective resources to his fellow teachers and mentees. His door is always open, and he seldom turns down a challenge. Roberta Road is extremely fortunate to have Mr. Johnston as a valued staff member. Mr. Johnston, thank you for the impact you have made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the
Okay, next, we're gonna go to 4.04, oh no, it's 4.03, Everyday Hero Award. We're gonna have Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Chuck, Mr. Chuck Taylor, welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to you, Members of the Board, and Dr. Kapicki. If I could have Mr. Ray Mullis and any special guests in his presence or accompanying him This evening, we're here to honor and celebrate an extraordinary member of our auxiliary services team. This individual embodies the true spirit of what it means to be a hero. Sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge, the recipient of this month's Everyday Hero Award is somebody who has consistently gone above and beyond. They impact the lives of many through acts of kindness, dedication, and selflessness daily. Our honoree is not someone who seeks recognition or applause, but rather one who finds joy in making a difference, no matter how big or how small, whether it's through putting in extra hours, supporting those in need, or motivating others with their can-do attitude and esprit de corps. This individual should serve as a source of inspiration for us all. Mr. Mullis's tireless efforts have not only brought positive change, but have reminded us of the impact that one person can make. It is with great admiration and gratitude that we present this month's Everyday Hero Award to Mr. Ray Mullis, a member of our Facilities and Maintenance Grounds Team. Joining me here tonight is Mr. Chuck Taylor, Director of Facilities and Maintenance for Cabarrus County Schools. Mr. Taylor's gonna share with you why Mr. Mullis was chosen as this month's Everyday Hero Award recipient.
Good evening, the Board and Dr. Kapicki, nice to see you tonight. Tonight, I would like to honor one of the F&amp;D Team members who's been with us the longest, Mr. Ray Mullis. We actually counted 22 years he's served with us, but he started a long time before us with the county and ended up moving over when we rearranged things. Sam shaking his head, so he must remember. So, Ray has been and always will be a key member of our team. There are so many things I would like to say about him, there's just not enough time tonight, and with respect for time in this setting, we're just gonna let him have his moment and talk about just a few of the remarkable. And when I say remarkable, that's absolutely what I mean, remarkable things he's done. So, Ray, as a man, is a man of many faces and facets. There's many parts to him, he's a very complicated guy, but as a technician, Ray is a consummate professional who garners the respect of all those around him, above him, and below him. And everyone should take that to heart. He has made the difference. He is one of those key people that has made us succeed in facilities for the last 11 years I've been here and all the years before I was here that Ray's been here. I think that was 2002. Okay, so, he strives for perfection, he can adeptly maneuver in the nuances of all of his projects. We all know, we do a lot of projects, none of them are ever perfect, there's always problems. Ray works through those, he finds a way. In Facilities Maintenance Department, it's important for everybody to know, in my opinion, because Ray- because Ray demonstrates this on a daily basis. We have two mottos. One of them is, we either go, go ahead. That's right. Find a way or make one. And what's the other one? That's right. Ray makes that happen every day. I'm proud to say I would serve with that man anywhere in any capacity. So Ray is directly responsible for saving the district multiple, and this is not an exaggeration, multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars. Okay? This man's expertise and knowledge, I can't tell you how many playgrounds they've resurrected, not only and installed. Many times when we couldn't afford to buy new playground equipment or to have them put in and installed, Ray and his team went out and installed them themselves. This is a huge feat, saved this county a lot of money. Ray demonstrates that with his crew every day. Ray is truly a man that walks the wall. I cannot ever say I've seen Ray angry, because I have. But I can tell you this, even in anger and frustration, Ray makes it through his day with absolute composure. He maintains his dignity, and he maintains the dignity of his people. I want to say troops, sorry, backing up my old days. But it feels a lot like that. You know, Dr. Bowers was talking about esprit de corps. That's what it feels like every day for us, because we are like the old cavalry. We come at the last minute, just in time, and we never have enough resources to do what we're trying to do. So with that, Ray is incredibly mission-focused and never forgets that we are here to support students and staff. In fact, the one and only time I have ever, as a director, fussed at Mr. Mullis is because he was working too hard. Take that to the bank. Ray remembers that, don't you, Ray? Yeah. I happened to walk up on him, and there was a bunch of young men watching him shovel. I didn't think very highly of that. I've had the pleasure of working with and for Ray, emphasize the for, over the years and have grown to know him as a man of principle, faith, and compassion. One of the things that always impressed me about Ray is, no matter what happens, he takes time to get to work early before the day starts, and he does a devotional every morning. I've never caught him when he wasn't doing it. With that, Ray regularly comes in early, right after that devotional. He's getting everything ready, setting up the day for his guys, and he goes out and he makes the things I promised all of you happen, along with a lot of other folks, just like Mr. Walter there. Ray, you are more than deserving of this recognition, and you will always have my respect and admiration. Love you, brother.
Got it. Congratulations, Ray.
Well-deserved recognitions. We've got a couple more, though. Next item is 4.04, Title I Distinguished Schools' Recognitions. We have Dr. Mary Beth Ross and Ms. Amy Cummings. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, and Dr. Kapicki. We are here to recognize one of our Title I schools for an incredible achievement. And Amy Cummings, our Title I and DLI coordinator, is going to share additional information about this recognition.
Thank you. I would like to ask Ms. Beth White, Assistant Principal of Coltrane Webb, to come forward, please. So thank you, Chairman Walter, Board of Education members, and Dr. Kapicki, for allowing me to present this evening a very well-deserved recognition for Coltrane, excuse me, yes, Coltrane Webb Step Elementary School. On October 23rd, 2024, Coltrane Webb was recognized as a Title I distinguished school as one of the top schools for closing the achievement gap specifically for multilingual students. Megan Smith, then-principal, was recognized for this achievement at a luncheon for the designees and guests during the North Carolina Association of Federal Education Programs administrators. She received a banner to be displayed at the school. Distinguished schools are chosen based upon a thorough analysis of student achievement data for all Title I schools in North Carolina. This is a significant achievement for Coltrane Webb and Cabarrus County Schools, and we're extremely proud of them. Please join me in congratulating Ms. White and Coltrane Webb.
Okay, and the next recognition is 4.05, Schools Psychologist of the Year recognition, and we have Ms. Amy Ladder. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, and Dr. Kapicki. It is with great enthusiasm and heartfelt appreciation that we recognize the School Psychologist of the Year Award this evening. I'd like to invite Michelle Queen and members of her family and any school administrators up to the podium. After receiving multiple nominations from her peers, we are honored to recognize Mrs. Michelle Queen, whose exemplary services as a school psychologist embodies the highest standards of excellence, aligning seamlessly with the NASS practice model. Serving Mount Pleasant Elementary and Mount Pleasant Middle School, her dedication to evidence-based practices and data-informed decision-making has significantly enhanced academic and social-emotional outcomes for students. Ms. Queen is a tireless advocate for students, families, and staff, building sustainable systems to meet unique needs of students while upholding the highest ethical and professional standards. She's admired for her calm presence in times of crisis, mentorship of peers, and skills in fostering collaboration. Whether facilitating tiered problem-solving processes with expertise and care, leading parent education sessions, or supporting her team, Mrs. Queen exemplifies integrity, compassion, and innovation. Her schools trust her implicitly, valuing her approachable demeanor, her problem-solving abilities, and her commitment to ensure the best outcomes for every student. Ms. Queen has served as a mentor and supervisor for many of our school psychologists on our team, and she has a serving mindset as she gives back to the profession and supports public education at a higher level. Thank you, Michelle, for your unwavering dedication and your impactful work in our school community. Everyone, please join me in congratulating Michelle Queen as School Psychologist of the Year.
And now that the principal and assistant principal and all are in, you guys got to come with. Part of the deal. All right, perfect. Here we go. Three, one, two. Guys, congratulations.
So that concludes our recognitions part of the meeting. We're going to move on to our next section, which is approval of minutes. 5.01 is the approval of minutes from the December 2nd Board Meeting and the December 9th Board Meeting. And board members, you've had an opportunity to review those. If there's any comments or changes, please let me know. If not, if we're all okay with it, please, I need a motion and a second to approve our minutes.
So moved.
So a motion, Ms. Escobar, a second, by Mr. Tredaway. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, our minutes are approved. They will be, I guess, posted on the website as well? Ms. Furr? Laurie? Are they on the website when they're? Okay. So you can find the minutes on the website as well. All right, so we'll move on to the next section, Board Chair and Superintendent Comments. Got a few things here. I mean, first, really, I'd like to say thank you to our candidates who have applied to our empty board seat here tonight. All of them are highly qualified, experienced, and invested in Cabarrus County Schools. I was very, very pleased to see that as we went through those applications. So thank you for your desire to serve alongside us on this board and your willingness to sacrifice for our students. Being a board member will take a lot of your time, energy, and effort, and just one of you can fill that seat. But I hope, even if you are not selected, that you're going to stay involved with Cabarrus County Schools. So to our public that is here and those that are watching online, those who have reached out to us, thank you for being engaged in this process and for your perspective and knowledge of the individual candidates. We've appreciated learning about aspects not necessarily included in the application that they submitted. So we especially appreciate the focus on the positive aspects that would bring, that they could add to the board. So all our candidates deserve our appreciation and respect for being willing to go through this process. Secondly, I want this board to make a positive impact for students, teachers, staff, and family in 2025. And one of those things is goals that paint a picture of the destination and gives us a direction to work for. This is a quote I really like. It says, "We might not be able to change the direction of the wind, but we can adjust our sails towards a course to reach our destination." So I'm asking our board members to help us set that destination for the next year by thinking of some smart goals that we want to achieve collectively by the end of the year. Board members, take some time next week to think about goals. We're going to share and discuss that during our planning session this month, and then I think we're also talking about strategic plan as well. And then finally, we have some of our representatives, newly-elected representatives, and Brian Etcheverria has asked to be introduced, so I would like to give him, or bring him up and have him an opportunity to say hello to us. So Brian, welcome.
Can you hear me? There we go. Well, good evening, Cabarrus County. I'm one of your new representatives, Brian Etcheverria. I'm excited, and people are excited. Everywhere I've been, there's overwhelming support and people wishing me well, because for us to do well, we all have to do well, and I think people understand that. So I'm really looking forward to working with our school board to get things done for our community, our school board, our school system. We want to get that done. But I'm really here to give you a quick update. The long session doesn't start until the end of the month, but I've been figuring out where the bathroom is, how to get downstairs, getting to know my colleagues, that sort of stuff, and it's been good. There's been a very warm reception. I'm in room 536 in the newer building, if you're in the area and you want to come visit me. We have a lot to address this year, and even though assisting our brothers and sisters in western Carolina is going to be the priority, I won't neglect our need to protect our homes from higher property taxes. Right? I'm hoping we can get a little zympic for our budget. That would be nice, to make sure that we get more schools, school safety for not just students, but also for teachers. That's been a focus. Expanding educational options for our children, also honoring the role that parents play. So that's very important, and I want to invite everyone. I have a website that I've set up for our community. It's B4NC. That's B-E-4-N-C dot com. And I'm trying to bring the state representative role into 2025. There's an AI assistant there that can answer most government-related questions. So to kind of streamline things for our community, I'm hoping to set an example, make that accessible to all of our representatives in Raleigh, that they would be able to serve their constituents with it also. So you can also ask the questions in Spanish. I will also be publishing a calendar on the site, allowing you to connect with me when I'm here locally. I think that'd be a great service. Accessibility is important. But even with so many unknowns from DC to Cabarrus County, I want you to know I fully intend to serve you with excellence and keep you informed about events, about the challenges and opportunities that are ahead for our community. Again, I am your representative, Brian Etcheverria, and if you have any questions, you can go to that website, or you can go to nclg.gov and find the contact information for all of us. God bless you really, really good. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Looks like you've hit the ground running. Jonathan Almond, if you want to say? And I noticed our city councilman, Laurie Clay, has stuck into the room, so I wanted to recognize you. Thank you for coming to our meeting. So with that, I will hand it over to the superintendent for superintendent comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I'd like to spend a few moments recognizing some of our wonderful educators in the system here in Cabarrus County Schools and some of the things they have accomplished recently. First is Kate Highsmith, our STEM coach at Patriots STEM Elementary School. She has been selected as an Educator of Excellence by the North Carolina Museum of National Sciences. From Wednesday, January 15th to Wednesday, January 22nd, Kate will be participating with other educators of excellence in professional development, studying, and documenting the monarch butterfly and humpback whale migration in Mexico. Information will be shared in Parents' Square tomorrow so that parents, students, and staff can follow along with Kate on her journey. Congratulations, Kate. CC Griffin's STEM Middle School teacher, Natalie Mahia, has been selected as an inaugural Learning Happens Here Teacher Ambassador as part of the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources Learning Happens Here Initiative. This will provide Mrs. Mahia with the unique professional opportunity to join seventeen other K-12 teacher ambassadors to engage with, explore, learn from, and promote the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, diverse educational entities, and resources all across North Carolina, from museums and historic sites to aquariums and state parks. Mrs. Mahia was also the North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year, I believe, last year, so she just continues to excel in the classroom, and we're thrilled to have her, too. So congratulations, Natalie. Lincoln Middle School teacher Jennifer Nichols has been selected as one of the forty-one educators from sixteen European countries and nineteen United States to serve on the Transatlantic Educators Dialogue TED 2025 cohort. The Transatlantic Educators Dialogue is a one-of-a-kind opportunity for educators in the United States of America and Europe to come together online for shared exploration and examination of a variety of educational topics such as immigration, educational equality, active teaching methods, and issues related to identity and difference. Congratulations again to Jennifer. WR Oldell Primary teacher Summer Espinoza is one of twenty-seven educators from across North Carolina to have been named a finalist for the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching 2025 Burroughs Welcome Fund North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year Award. These exceptional teachers have been recognized for the dedication, innovation, and ability to inspire students to succeed. In March, one finalist will be named the 2025 NCCAT Burroughs Welcome Fund NC Beginning Teacher of the Year, which will follow a rigorous selection process by a panel of North Carolina judges. This is the third year in a row that a Cabarrus County school's beginning teacher has been a finalist for this award. Congratulations again to Summer. And finally, congratulations to the administrators, staff, students, and parents at Cox Mill Elementary School. Cox Mill was recently named as the 25th Best Elementary School in North Carolina by the United States News and World Report. The ranking is based on the school's performance on statewide assessments and how well they prepare students for high school. So we talk an awful lot about the state, national, and global level, the state, national, and global level as to how our kids do and how well they're prepared when they come to Cabarrus County Schools. And I just want to highlight some of those teachers, because they are a handful of teachers that exhibit and... that exhibit and demonstrate the excellence that is here in Cabarrus County Schools. Our teachers are as good as it gets, and I'm very thankful and grateful for all the work that they do with our students every single day. And again, it's something you should all be proud of as a community, because they're excelling not just in the region, not just in the state, but the national, global level. Our teachers are being recognized across the world, and it speaks highly to the excellent hires that we've had here, and then they go into the classroom and they work with your kids. So you should feel really good about the awards, the nominations, and the excellence that exists here and the demonstration that these teachers continue to perform. We are a very special school system with very special teachers, and I'm very proud and humbled to work with all of them. So thank you to all of our teachers in the Cabarrus County School System. You are extraordinary. I also want to point out that January is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. As we begin the new year, we recognize January as the National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. It's a time to raise awareness about an important issue affecting people of all ages, including children and teens. Human trafficking can happen anywhere, and understanding its signs is key to protecting those at risk. Together, we can create a safer, more supportive community for everyone. Cabarrus County Schools is committed to the well-being of every student. Through education and open communication, we aim to ensure all children feel safe, supported, and empowered. We invite our families to join us in this effort to protect and care for our community's young people. For more information, helpful tips, and resources to ensure safety, please see information that was shared through Parent Square in last Friday's Friday Five. This is a very serious topic, and I don't want anyone to be naive or think this doesn't happen. It does happen, and it is occurring in this area. You have major interstates coming through here. I don't need to tell you that. You see it, and we all understand the geographic location of the Cabarrus County Schools and where we sit. We have to all make sure that we're protecting our kids and not allow anyone to traffic our kids coming through here. Our social workers, our psychologists, our guidance council administrators, you've seen some of them this evening, they do a fantastic job and make sure that we promote this issue and make our community aware of this terrible thing that takes place, and this human trafficking. So I ask all of you, if you become aware of anything, do not hesitate to reach out to your principal at any school or to call the administrators of this office. We have the resources available, and we know how to contact the right authorities to make sure we're protecting our kids. So please, all of us, let's be aware, so we're taking every step as a community to protect our children. They are our most important resource. Let's never forget that. And then lastly, two things. Martin Luther King Day is Monday, January 20th, and to all of our students and staff, we will honor Martin Luther King's holiday, and the schools will be closed on January 20th, one week from today. And lastly, Mr. Walters and the Board of Education, I've asked Carl Sane to briefly update us on the cybersecurity attack that occurred through the Power School learning management system this past week. Mr. Sane?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Kapiki, members of the board and community. Let me begin by stating that Cabarrus County Schools is committed to protecting the privacy and confidentiality of all of its current and former students, family, and staff. However, on the afternoon of Tuesday, January 7th, Power School alerted North Carolina Public Schools and also the North Carolina Public Department of Public Instruction to a cybersecurity incident impacting student and teacher data that was across their global client base. Power School is the student information system that we use, but this has been in use statewide across North Carolina since 2013. But as I mentioned, this incident was not isolated to North Carolina, and it impacted not only just other states, but then actually other countries as well. Power School has shared that the compromised data was not shared externally, I'm sorry, that data was not shared, and that it has been contained and destroyed. Power School has additionally confirmed that there were no actions that Cabarrus County Schools nor NCDPI could have taken to prevent this cybersecurity incident. In a webinar earlier this week, NCDPI officials had indicated that they expected almost every single school in North Carolina would be impacted by this breach, and Cabarrus County Schools has now received formal confirmation that our teacher and student data was compromised. It's important to note, we do not yet have information on the individuals whose data may have been compromised, nor which specific data points were stolen. We are awaiting that specific information from Power School and from NCDPI's investigation. In the event of a data breach, institutions are required to file reports with state and federal agencies, as well as notify impacted individuals. We have been assured that Power School will conduct all necessary notifications once their analysis is complete to ensure appropriate and accurate compliance with local, state, and federal requirements and laws. I would like to reiterate several important points regarding this and other cybersecurity incidents. Again, Cabarrus County Schools is committed to protecting the privacy and confidentiality of our data, including both current and former students, families, and staff. We have processes in place to protect our own data and comply with state and federal requirements. Keep in mind, there is nothing that Cabarrus County Schools or the state could have done to avoid this incident, as this occurred due to a Power School employee's credentials being stolen in their corporate headquarters. Cabarrus County School teams will be working diligently with Power School and DPI to find out which files were breached, and this will be a top priority for our department. When more information is available from DPI and Power School, we will follow up with communication to stakeholders. I should mention that we notified all staff late last week, as well as all families, through our Parent Square notifications. We also set up an email account. The email account is info@cabarrus.k12.nc.us. Keep in mind, we have limited information at this time, aside from what was just shared. We do not know individuals that were impacted, nor do we know which data fields were impacted, but we are happy to try to be able to answer whatever questions we can't answer at this time and support our students, families, staff, and stakeholders in fielding any questions that may arise.
Where do they go for the questions?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I mean, if the public has questions about this, how do they reach you?
I would recommend emailing the account info@cabarrus.k12.nc.us. And again, this could impact, we've communicated with our current staff, we've communicated with our current families. As we learn more about the extent of this damage, we may additionally need to contact former staff and former students as well.
Okay. Any other board members with questions? Pam?
Thank you for that information. From what I understand, Power School is offering like credit monitoring and services to people whose information was taken. So is that part of what you're hearing as well? And do you know what's available specifically? Because I'm just worried about a student now who's under 18, 10 years from now, you know, if you have their social security number, there's a lot you can do.
That's right. So I have seen that Power School is offering that service. Again, it's difficult for us to know, without knowing exactly which fields were compromised, exactly what to start communicating to members of the public that they'll need to protect. I hesitate to share with certainty much about what I think about which data fields were compromised. I am.
The updates on Power School's system are coming in almost daily. We got one this afternoon as well. I'm not, I don't want to speak for them. I don't want to speak out of turn when I say this. I'm not sure they have all the facts and all the details yet as well. So as they come out, we'll keep the public informed, and should any credit monitoring come across, which I'm sure they will offer, we'll post it on our website. And I'll work with Mr. Sane, perhaps maybe putting a special link on there for all of our staff and teachers and those concerned, but we will keep you up to date on that. Great question. We just really don't have, we just want to make sure we're communicating, we're aware, we're working with Power School. It's a national situation that has occurred, and it has not infiltrated, thank God, our system. It's their system that it got into, which all of our stuff gets uploaded through the state system. So we just want to make sure that our public is aware of that, and we'll keep you up to date as we're informed. Again, we're not trying to be elusive, but we really don't know. That's why we're.
We just don't have much more information than what I just shared.
But we will update you as we get the information coming through.
That's right.
Thank you, Dr. Kapiki. Any other board members with questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next section, which is Board Committee Review, seven point oh one. So back in December, we had a list from the previous board, shared with me, and I shared that with you, our board members. Since then, I've tried to organize those committees. I've tried to ask Dr. Kapiki to kind of give us a summary or an overview of what each committee does, and I've provided that to our board members. We solicited, the board members have given me the feedback over the last month about what committees that they are interested in serving on, and this does take time. So it's more than just our two meetings a month. They donate, or they give a lot of their time and service to get involved in the school system in different areas, and there's a lot of areas to be involved in. I mean, Sam, for example, has already involved six different committees besides our board meetings. So thank you for him, for his willingness to do that. So I've taken your requests, tried not to take anybody off any committees, but I've added the primary contact for the committee and a secondary or alternate for each of those committees, and that is uploaded to Board Docs there. And then I do want to point out that there is, the changes, the two changes that were made is we've added two committees. One is a Standing Board Committee that is dedicated to our legislative agenda. So every year, our school system gets together and they put together, we put together what are our big legislative priorities. In the past, we've had a trip to Raleigh to meet with our representatives. We've also had joint meetings with our county. So with the session starting shortly, I think it's time-sensitive that we get together and start working on what our priorities are for 2025. So I'd like to ask Greg and Melanie to get together, look at our 2004 legislative agenda, see if you need other members in the committee to do an analysis, and then come back to us with a recommendation that our whole.
2024.
2024 was when we last did this. So we're working on the 2025 legislative agenda. And the second one is Legal Affairs Committee, and this is an ad hoc committee, because this is also time-sensitive. We have a contract with our current attorney that expires in the end of June. We need to figure out what we want to do moving forward, looking at it financially, looking at it, looking at fees, looking at how we're using our attorneys, even if it makes sense to do in-house. So in order to do that efficiently, we really need some expertise, and we need a committee to start work really today, or as soon as possible, on that work. And I've asked Catherine Moore to be our primary, and Sam Tredaway with his experience to be the secondary, so both of them can get together, see who else you would like on that committee. We'll add them to that. And then lastly, we still need to discuss, when I went through this list, and I've looked at some of the lists prior, there's a lot of committees that have disappeared or are inactive. I've gotten suggestions of several new, potential new committees, respecting people's time on having committee meetings. We really just need to flesh that out. So we're going to be bringing this back again next month, and we'll have a new board member, so we'll have an opportunity to assign them some of these spots, too. There are a couple openings. If there is any interest on any of our current members, let me know. We can add you to that. But that's kind of what I wanted to bring today on this item, and I'll open that up to any discussion. All right, so we'll move forward. Those are your committee's assignments. We will let the contact person know of the new, if there are any changes to those committees. So thank you. Going to move on to the next item, which is our guest speaker section, and I'm not going to read this paragraph, because when you came in, we have 30 speakers signed up tonight, so this is literally an hour and a half if everybody takes all the time. They're allotted. I hope that some of you will condense some of your comments, if someone has already mentioned something that you'd like to get forth, bring forth for our consideration. But each speaker will have three minutes, groups have five minutes. Again, the expectations are there when you came in, and we're going to, to get started, again, pay attention to the time. We do have a timer, and when it goes beep, I think that's your time is up, or if I ask you to stop. So with that, we're going to start with our first speaker who signed up, was with Mr. Paul Wannis. Make sure the microphone is on.
Wrong red light. Good evening, board members and Dr. Kapiki. It's a new year and a time of renewal. We get a chance to reflect and adapt, though we're in the middle of this school year. I want to cover two topics, the district modular classroom situation and Policy 3320 school trips. First, everyone knows that I don't particularly like the modular classrooms. I no more want a Cabarrus student in one than I wish that any of you or all of you lived in trailer parks without running water to your units. When I was younger, I had a trailer in my yard, and my kids played in it, but they never really spent more than a few hours there. So if the district is really committed to modular classrooms, the units need to be just like the regular schooling in the main building site. Currently, they are not. Every modular classroom does not meet North Carolina building codes. Codes are put in place for homes, businesses, stadiums, educational facilities, and the list goes on. They create a safe and harmonious environment across the state. Each modular unit fails the codes from one to four different reasons, and the district was formally notified of a noncompliance of a good portion of these as far back as August 3rd. To date, I haven't seen any remediation plans from the superintendent, who is required by a North Carolina statute, quote, "to make immediate provisions to remedy any unsafe or unsanitary condition existing in any school building," unquote. Noncompliance must have a published action plan. Some of these you can't fix overnight. Now, onto Policy 3320, Section C. It states, "Students must not be charged a fee for school trips for which credit is granted." And I'll do a little diversion from what I had sent on to you. Credit is granted is really key, because there's no real definition of it. So there are others that say, "The board may impose fees for other nonrequired school trips." I think we can all agree that senior weekend trips to the beach is nonrequired. But what are elementary trips like to the Charlotte Discovery Place? I think those are educational. From personal knowledge, I find that funds are being collected. Does that mean there is no credit for the trip? If yes, then collected funds must also not be counted as a school day, because it's not for education. And that means teachers now are not actually there on school time. This seems to be a dichotomy, and there should be some resolution to it. I've also, not in the thing I sent you, I've heard some people that are in type-one schools and underprivileged students in other schools that have been told they have to pay, or they don't go, and that's not what's in the policy. The policy says we can accommodate people who have problems with finance. No information on how many trips or how they were funded was available through public record requests that I have made through, though clearly, if they handled funds, someone has been creating records. I have, I asked the board to reexamine this policy for clarity and probably require 2026 funds to cover credit trips. They are all definitely very valuable for knowledge and interpersonal relationships. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wannis. Our next speaker is Lori Clay. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Kapiki, Rob Walter. It's good to see you, other members of our esteemed school board. It's nice to see you all. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Lori Clay. I'm a lifelong resident of Cabarrus County, and I also have the honor to serve on Concord City Council. I represent District Two, which covers our downtown area. Tonight, I would like to speak on behalf of Shannon Lancaster. Shannon and I were both educated in Cabarrus County Schools, and as a matter of fact, we went to high school together. I've known Shannon for a very long time. While her resume speaks for itself, what you may not see on that paper is evidence of her character. She has always been a kind, fair, and honest person. I've always known her to do the right thing, even when it may not have always been the most popular choice. She always is simply nice to everyone. What we are missing in all levels of our government today are people of character. Shannon is indeed a person of character that I am certain will always put the needs of our children first, ahead of any politics or party. I am certain she will work tirelessly with all members of the school board to continue to make our schools the best and most appropriate place to educate our children and form leaders of character for tomorrow. I ask you to please consider not only Shannon's resume, but mostly her character in your decision tonight to fill your vacant seat. I'm quite certain she is your best candidate. Thank you so much for allowing me time before you.
Thank you, Ms. Clay. Our next, our next speaker is Rachel Phelps. Our next, our next speaker is Rachel Phelps. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, everyone, board chair, everyone. I'm going to be very short. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As a Cabarrus County resident since 2013, and a parent who has had two sons graduate the school system, and now grandson who has entered the school system, I'm very invested in the community. I also have started a small nonprofit for youth, for at-risk and system-involved youth. So I'm very, very invested. I'm here to offer my support for Michelle Williams. We all know that she is impeccably qualified for the position as well as everyone else, but I would like to talk about what sets her apart. She has a deep understanding of the educational system from an insider's perspective. She has firsthand experience in dealing with classroom challenges to make informed policy decisions about resource allocation, teacher support, and curriculum development. We all know that collaboration is very important, so having a liaison between teachers and the board is very important, in my opinion. She also has experience working with marginalized communities with Title I schools, and she has a dedication to welcoming environment for all students. Her dedication to creating, I'm sorry, the school board can, Michelle's perspective, the school board can ensure that every student feels seen, heard, and supported in their educational journey. Also, which is most important to me, is that she focuses on the entire child, not just academically. She highlights a commitment to the holistic development of all her students. This approach recognizes that for the students to succeed, they need to support not only academic subjects, but also their social, emotional, and physical development, and I see that Cabarrus County does very well with that. In essence, having Michelle on the school board can bridge the gap between policy and practice. As a teacher, active parent, and caring and involved community member, she can give the community a school board that reflects the county's diversity and its needs while accomplishing goals. All these qualities lead to a committed individual who can help make decisions that positively impact students' well-being and long-term success. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amos McCory. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening. Mr. Walter, Superintendent Kapeki, board. My name is Amos McCory. I represent the state of North Carolina NAACP. I'm coming down here this evening from the state executive board in support of Michelle. It's Michelle Williams, Dr., I think she's Dr. Michelle Williams. We support her because she, as we look at this, is not about the other people's qualification, but what she did. Michelle was the only person that we see that was qualified to run for this position because she ran during the general election. She was the only one that you have to look at that put in a year's worth of work to sit on this board. So we say to you, that should make it easy because she actually put in the work to be here. Now, when a board like this makes a decision, you take away all those thousands of votes that people voted for her in this county, which is to you should be confirmation that she is a qualified candidate. If you're going to supersede her votes that she got in the county and allow a few people to override those votes, then we think that's a detriment to what she did and put in the work. I don't have anything against the other people who's running against her, but we do have understanding that this person is the only one of the candidates that you are looking at that actually ran for the seat countywide. So with that said, we took a look at Cabarrus County, and we know what's here, and what I see here in front of me today is not what the county represents. This county is 22.9% African-American. Your school members and students is 22.9% African-American minority students. That means to us that they don't see diversity in this educational system here in Cabarrus County. You have a chance to fix that. Now, we'd like to see more diversity put in the Cabarrus County school system. Starting with the 140 principals that you have, only 30 of the principals and system, only 30 of them are African-American. We think you got a chance to fix that tonight or whenever you take your vote. Now, we had two questions coming from the state of North Carolina from the NAACP. Question number one, what is the legality of the position that you are taking? We would like to hear or at least receive something in writing back from you saying that this is a legal process that you're doing to pick somebody to replace your vacant seat. Now, what I mean by that, you want to quit? You want to hear my questions?
If you're speaking for a group, you have to...
I'm speaking for a group.
Yes, one.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to, like to know, cut that off. Like to know is, what statute or is the school board putting itself in front of you to say that this process that you are going to elect somebody or appoint somebody to the seat governs that, so we know what statute you're going by here in the county? We understand that when that's a def, but when this person that vacated the seat did it last May, and you wait till this long, and that person has already been seated and sworn in, did she hold two seats or he hold two seats at the same time? We need to know that information, or would like to know that information. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Joan Chesley. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Cabarrus citizens and Dr. Kapeki and school board. Over the last 15 years, the Cabarrus County population has increased by 32%, and much of this is due to African-American population doubling. Why is this important? It is important because the representation of people of color on the board and leading in our schools often correlates with the level of success among students of color. Many school districts have seen improvement among their lowest-performing subgroups, this is across the country, once they placed importance on representation, and they do so unapologetically, knowing that leaders whose own personal experiences with poverty, racism, and oppression bring a special kind of competence that promotes excellence among low-performing students. I believe selecting Ms. Michelle Williams would say that this board proactively seeks to represent and address students of color, believes in the power of representation, and recognizes that citizens feel seen and heard when they see someone who looks like themselves in leadership positions. When newcomers move to our county, they look at things like this. They ask, how many board members and administrators are African-American or Hispanic? Why are only 16% of black students in AG, of black male students in AG courses? Why did only 22% of black students score a 19 or higher on ACT last year when 57% of white students did? Why are there twice as many black and Hispanic students considered not proficient in math and reading when they're compared to white students? Why are black students not performing significantly better than Hispanic students when language is not the issue? The National School Board Association endorses school boards that share ethnic backgrounds of the students in their districts. That organization, the National School Board Association, promotes operating school boards with an equity lens to, number one, allocate funding based on inequities, to create policies that address cultural nuances, and to ensure that the most effective teachers are placed in low-performing schools. The association believes that this equity lens begins with having a board that includes members from diverse cultures. Our schools have struggled to close gaps ever since 1954, when Brown versus Board was handed down, and here in 2025, huge gaps remain. I believe that when we ensure that our administration and our school boards reflect the makeup of our county, citizens feel more respected and become more invested. Representation matters. Michelle Williams has already been vetted as equal to the other candidates, but she will bring the added value of cultural authenticity to our board, and this makes any board more effective.
Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here this evening on behalf of 40,464 residents of Cabarrus County. The words I speak this evening are my own, but 40,000 residents would agree that Michelle Williams would make an excellent board member. Her personal and professional qualifications are outstanding. She is a certified teacher, a mom of Cabarrus County schoolchildren, and a PTO Board Vice President in Cabarrus County. She has a bachelor's and a master's degree in education and literacy, is an Orton-Gillingham tutor, and an Institute of Political Leadership fellow. A statement she made to me earlier last summer is as follows, and she said, "I am running for the school board to ensure that every child, every child receives a quality education. I am committed to expanding curriculum options and supporting our public schools, public schools, to create an environment that nurtures the whole child, physical, socio-emotional, mental, and academic. My three core priorities are addressing the evolving needs of our students in our growing community, supporting and retaining our dedicated school staff, which we saw this evening, very, very impressive people that you have working for you. Social workers, speech pathologists, school counselors, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, coaches, and every other staff member. Each individual plays a crucial role in supporting our diverse student body, and their contributions are vital to creating a strong, thriving school environment." And I applaud everyone that was in here today, all the children and all the school employees. That's the end of her quote. Again, on behalf of 40,464 residents of Cabarrus County who voted for her in the fall, I respectfully request that you elect Michelle Williams as the newest member of the Cabarrus County school board. Thank you.
Next, Rosa Sims. I skipped somebody up, sorry. Cheryl Johnson. Either, my apologies for that.
Don't worry, Rosa, I will be very quick. I just want to echo what everyone has said about Michelle Williams. Michelle Williams has a beautiful spirit. I had the opportunity to meet Michelle for the first time this past summer as we canvassed voters, and to echo what the NAACP chair said, Michelle is a hard worker. I worked alongside her on the canvassing trail. I saw her getting those signs out early, hitting the campaign trail, knocking on doors, talking to voters. Michelle is a hard worker. Michelle is committed. Michelle is a great communicator. Michelle is a great listener. I want to just talk about this one incident that I had with her as we worked the early voting polls. There was an African-American father that felt comfortable coming to her and expressing his concerns about the condition of his son's high school. And this speaks to the need for people who look like you to be represented on the board. Michelle, with her great listening ability, comforted this young man and encouraged him to come to the school board meetings, to get involved, and was committed, as a school board member, to be working on behalf of all of our residents. Michelle has a beautiful spirit, as I said. She's committed. She is hardworking. And last but certainly not least, as said before, she is an experienced educator. As a certified educator myself, I understand that Michelle has firsthand knowledge of what teachers need to be effective in their classrooms. She has firsthand knowledge of what students need to be advanced academically, socially, emotionally, and in every way. It is so important that Michelle Williams be on the Cabarrus County school board. She is needed. She would be an asset and a great addition to the school board and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms., welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Cheryl, I forgive you. Good evening. I am Rosa Culver-Sims. I am a resident of Harrisburg. I am a grandmother of two adorable nine-year-old twins who attend Rosa, and I am also the newly-elected Cabarrus County Chair of the Democratic Party. But this evening, I'm speaking to you as a grandmother. You've heard about how accomplished Michelle is. You've heard about her qualifications. You've heard about her commitment. You've heard about her compassion. So I'm not going to talk about Michelle. I'm actually here to talk to you about you. My granddaughters are beautiful, informed little girls. They understand politics. They canvass in every election cycle. They knocked doors for Michelle this past year. They are out there, they make billboards for the people that they want to win. So they're aware of what's going on. When they look at this body, they need to see someone that looks like them. Representation matters. When our students come before you to speak to you about issues that's important to them, they need to see someone that looks like them. Representation matters. When our students graduate from college and they're looking for places to sit down and have their roots, raise families, they look at this board. Representation matters. They need to see people that look like them. Now, the only question is, are you, as a body, going to toe the line and vote for Republicans like you've been told? Or are you going to uphold what you're here to do and vote for our children? Whether you appoint Michelle or not speaks more about you than it does about her.
Thank you. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. It's shopping.
My apologies.
No worries. Dear Cabarrus County School Board members, I speak to you today to urge you to appoint Michelle Williams to the vacant post on the school board. As an educator myself, I know the vast array of talents necessary to run a school efficiently and effectively. However, and this may be the result of personal bias, I believe the most important perspective comes from teachers themselves, those who have been in the trenches and are intimately familiar with the struggles of students today. And I may be comparing it to war, but anyone who's actually a teacher knows it is sometimes. A former teacher with a background in literacy in Title I schools, Michelle Williams will bring an invaluable point of view to the board if provided the opportunity to serve. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for the brief comments. Brian Williams, you're next. Guess you know the candidate best, don't you?
All right. Good evening, board. 40,464 is an important number. It's the number of Cabarrus County residents that voted for Michelle Williams for school board. We cannot disregard that. Michelle Williams has garnered support from all corners of the county, Republican, Democrat, and Independent, just like me, and has received overwhelming community support for this open seat. When I met Michelle, she was a kindergarten teacher, working significant hours, using her own resources for her children and her class, and her hard work has been a theme throughout her life. Often the first to arrive and last to leave, that's what you can expect from Michelle as a school board member. Michelle, as a daughter of both a Christian minister and a police officer who's also a SRO, Michelle is no stranger to public service and hard work. She does not believe in shortcuts. She's the only candidate for the open seat that actually was committed enough to participate in the most... that actually was committed enough to participate in the most recent general election. Many of you campaigned next to her. There is no better indication of dedication than going and doing the work. Michelle stood out of the polls for 12-hour days and campaigned for over 12 months, definitely for two weeks as we led up to the election, even on Halloween, missing our kids' sports games and more. Michelle is the only candidate to engage with school support staff, staying after meetings to talk to bus drivers to understand their challenges. That is dedication. This is the first major decision being made by the board since the school board has become partisan. Having to vote on party lines is not in the best interest of our children. Some of you are fully aware that Michelle has reached into the community that the currently comprised board simply does not have. Those communities matter too. As a parent of children who attend Cabarrus County schools, we are all watching to ensure that partisan politics that have no place in making decisions for our children do not rear its ugly head by appointing friends, spouses, close acquaintances who happen to be in the educational field but weren't committed enough to the children of Cabarrus County to actually be in the general election. I firmly believe that to sit in this seat and be effective, you need to be face-to-face and face the scrutiny of residents, face-to-face, who may not agree with your positions, so that you can understand their perspectives and views. Michelle is the only candidate that has done that. Michelle Williams is the best choice for this seat and will serve and prioritize all members of the county regardless of party affiliation. Forty thousand four hundred and sixty-four Cabarrus County residents believe so, and this board should believe the same and appoint Michelle Williams to the open seat. Our children deserve board members who have the courage to vote across party lines for the betterment of our children, in accordance with the oath of nonpartisan and no political gain that was signed by all board members on the first day that you took office. Thank you.[715.29][715.29](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Next up is John Clark. Welcome to the podium.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am also here to endorse Michelle Williams. The reason that I am endorsing Michelle is I believe that she is the candidate in this, here in this race, I guess, that will benefit the students of Cabarrus County the most. The reason that I believe that is I've really got three reasons. Number one is her experience. Number two is her commitment. And number three is her perspective, her experience. She has a bachelor's degree in education and a master's in curriculum and instruction. She's served as a school teacher for 10 years before she had her children. While she was working as a teacher, the administrations where she worked appointed her to mentor other teachers. While she mentored other teachers, she helped them learn all aspects of teaching, from lesson planning to classroom management. She provided professional development sessions, which helped provide teachers with the ability to help students with different needs. She also conducted peer observations where she offered constructive feedback to the other teachers, which helped them become more effective. She is also committed. Before she taught, she's served as a fellow on the south side of Chicago. Now, as you know, the south side of Chicago is one of the poorest and most high-crime areas in the whole country. And she dedicated herself to help those kids learn with all that they were facing. She has also actively served on the PTO where her children are in school. She has attended many school board meetings and spoken out on important issues. And also, as the others have said, she's starting, I'm not sure how long ago, working, putting in several hours every single day to get elected to the school board. The reason that she wanted to get elected to the school board was to use her talents to serve the children of Cabarrus County. Now, also, perspective. She has taught in a variety of schools in urban districts as well as suburban districts. She has taught in Title I schools, charter schools, online ESL schools. And also, I just feel like that has given her a background that none of the other candidates and none of the other board members have. So that's why I'm encouraging you to support Michelle Williams for this position.
Thank you for the comments.[921.13][921.13](APPLAUSE) Our next speaker will be Janet Kraft. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to speak in favor of Shannon Lancaster for a seat for the school board. Several years ago, Shannon served as Assistant Principal where I was employed as a school counselor, our Brown McAllister. Throughout the time that she was in a supervisory position, I found her to not only be a very competent and knowledgeable leader, but also a kind and considerate person (sigh) okay, I'm just nervous), who always brought a soothing calm that was like a balm for one soul. When she left our school, I remember feeling sadness that she was leaving, but thankful that I had the opportunity to work with her. Since those days, I have known Shannon on a less formal basis, but she continues to be someone that I view as very knowledgeable, level-headed, and compassionate. Much like when she was my Assistant Principal, Shannon brings a sense of calm stability to every situation, which I find quite valuable and refreshing. Given the large number of controversial issues that can be brought to a school board, I believe Shannon's reserved calm demeanor would prove to be invaluable to the school board. Her vast and lengthy experience as both an educator and a business owner give her a unique perspective that would benefit parents, students, and school employees. As a public school employee myself, I appreciate when the policy leaders make decisions that are reasonable, well-informed, and logical. I also know the problems that can come when policies are made from those who don't understand what it is like to actually work in a school setting. As a parent and resident of Cabarrus County, I'm well aware of the importance of the decisions made by our school board. I have complete confidence that Shannon Lancaster would make solid decisions with a thoughtfulness and wisdom that one can only find in someone who has the type of experiences that Shannon has spent a lifetime acquiring. It is my hope that you will strongly consider appointing her for our school board. I sincerely think you would be very pleased that you did. In addition, I want to thank each of you for the time and effort you give to serve on our board. It's a valuable job, and I, as well as many others, greatly appreciate it. Thank you.[1071.33][1071.33](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Quick. He is speaking for our group, so he will have five minutes. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to represent the Republican Party of Cabarrus County. As you're all aware, political parties have no official role in choosing replacement for Commissioner Laura Blackwell-Lindsey's seat on the board. However, the recent General Assembly state law change required our 22-member executive committee to consider our role in future nominations. We voted unanimously to create a process to review all conservative applications to provide tonight's recommendation. We thought we'd establish and test our own internal process for party use if we were required to make a future recommendation under the new state statute. Our committee evaluated six applicants. Our internal committee met in person to discuss and establish a process. Our committee members shared their past volunteer and professional interactions with each applicant. We thoroughly reviewed the applicant submissions, public statements, social media accounts, and other documentation. We have a strong and very talented list of applicants for your consideration tonight. Our rubric evaluated applicants as educators and community leaders on 14 unique criteria. Each member independently scored all six applicants. We evaluated applicants solely on their merit. During our committee work, we discovered unanimous desire for our newly-appointed school board member to be a licensed educator, experienced. Rather than looking through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, our diverse executive committee opted for the principles of meritocracy. We discovered a unique and unifying and undeniable desire to see our school district return to a focus on reading and writing together with math and science as the guiding principle to prepare students to contribute effectively to this community and their future employers. We agreed that a well-rounded board member with both instructional and administrative experience should fill Mrs. Lindsay's open seat to represent the certified instructional staff here in Cabarrus County. A teacher's voice and expertise, we'd immediately and effectively contribute to the discussions around this dais before a policy is implemented. Therefore, Mr. Kirk, Mrs. Lancaster, and Mrs. Allen rose to the top of our internal rubric due to their teaching licenses and extensive educational experience. When reviewing Mr. Hartzell's application, we valued his hands-on work in Cabarrus County schools and Kannaplis City schools. We also appreciate him running for office in the last election. Our committee preferred to see a board applicant who was a certified teacher at this time to meet our internal goals. Mrs. Allen's educational experience and background and hands-on time in the classroom are essential. However, because our internal rubric also weighed experience inside Cabarrus County schools as a parent, a teacher, administrator, and a teacher, our committee determined at this time it would be better served with an applicant with hands-on experience inside Cabarrus County schools. With that being said, Mr. Kirk's application was very impressive. We valued his role as a past board member, administrator, principal, and certified teacher inside the district. As a Republican and fellow conservative, Mr. Kirk's motion to recommend and vote to initiate the first actions around closing Beverly Hill schools was disturbing. Mr. Kirk also had a voting history while serving in 2018 through 2020, where he tended to vote more along what the central office was insisting instead of listening to the voice of the community and teachers. Our committee considered Mrs. Lancaster the best applicant when evaluating her as a licensed and experienced educator. She has instructional experience inside and outside the district and has served in diverse roles, including everything, as you've heard tonight, as Assistant Principal to Bus Driver. Mrs. Lancaster has coached sports, been a media specialist, been a teacher liaison in classrooms, and served as a mentor. Her advanced master's degree and doctorate work and continued work as a Realtor actively engaged in our community earned her a top score. The Cabarrus County Republican Party truly appreciates and values every applicant who submitted their name to this board. It is my honor to nominate Shannon Lancaster for this position.[1378.35][1378.35](APPLAUSE)
Our next speaker is Namu Khatru. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Namu Khatru, and I stand before you not just as a concerned parent, but as someone who deeply believes in the power of education to shape our children's future. I am a parent who knows the hopes and dreams we all have for our kids. We want them to succeed, to feel supported, and to grow, and to be prepared for the world that awaits them. And that's why I'm here tonight, because our children deserve more than just good intentions. They deserve leaders who will fight for them every single day, leaders like Michelle Williams. Throughout our journey together in this school board campaign, I have seen firsthand her unwavering commitment to our community and her deep passion for our children's education. She is someone who doesn't just talk about the change, she works for it. She doesn't just promise to listen, she takes action to make things better. Michelle is an advocate for our children, a tireless worker for our schools, and a compassionate listener for our parents and teachers. I know the struggles we face as parents, the struggles with transportation and communication gap that sometimes leave us feeling disconnected from the schools. Michelle has not only heard these concerns, she has lived them. As a parent, she knows what it is like to face these challenges every day. As a teacher, she understands the needs of our classroom, and as a member of PTO, she has worked hard to make a difference. Michelle is not someone who sits on the sidelines. She gets in the trenches with us. What sets Michelle apart is the powerful combination of her personal experience and her professional expertise. She brings her own experience as a parent alongside her extensive background in education to make thoughtful decisions that will positively impact every student in our community. As we move forward, let's prioritize our children's future in every decision we make. Michelle Williams is a leader who will keep our focus where it belongs, on our students, their success, and their well-being. She understands what it means to be a parent, a teacher, and a committed advocate for our schools. The responsibility we have as school board members is great, but so is the opportunity to make a lasting impact. Let us ensure that we support leaders like Michelle Williams who are committed to doing just that. Thank you.[1591.23][1591.23](APPLAUSE)
Our next speaker is Dr. Laura Musso-White. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not speaking on that topic at all.
Whatever the red light is, is what you're...
Can you hear me better? Thanks. Thank you for having me. The topic I'm speaking on tonight is actually vastly different, although I wish all the candidates tonight good luck. I'm sold. The topic I'm speaking on tonight is one that's very dear to many of us in the room. It's regarding the Mandarin Immersion Program at Cox Mill, one that Ms. Escobar spoke passionately about last Monday, one that we were alerted of the day before, unfortunately, and I think we were all very, very off-guard about the plan changes proposed. I think the meeting for us was alarming for many reasons. One is there was no parental engagement regarding its decision to move from Cox Mill to Harrisburg Elementary. That's 25 minutes from our home. I also didn't see any compelling data as to why that decision was being made. So I wanted to step back and kind of go through an email I sent to you, Dr. Kopicki, and your colleagues earlier today, just to kind of think through it. Our family moved here into the school district five years ago because of the Mandarin Immersion Program. My husband and I are both physicians. We took positions in Cabarrus County. We bought houses in Cabarrus County right beside Cox Mill Elementary because there was an opportunity there that is not present in Mecklenburg County schools, that is not present in Winston-Salem, where we also hold faculty appointments. We know the data behind language immersion. We know kids that do it do better, their test scores are higher. Certainly, that has proven to be true for this program as well. And I don't think any of us actually understand why it was announced in such a way at the last session. And it's very alarming. There was a term used quite a bit called ROI, return on investment, and I wasn't clear how that was being defined, because if you think about ROI, it matters deeply to us. It matters deeply to the individual. So what are we measuring when we say ROI? Yes, enrollment was down. Yes, there was a global epidemic that started in 2019 to 2020. There were children whose parents were concerned they weren't meeting basic standards in English, so why would they have them go and do an immersion program? I can hypothesize all night about why enrollment might have been down. But what we haven't seen is, what did advertising look like? What do these teachers need to get more kids interested? Was the aggregate data presented? Do people even know about this program? And I can tell you, I've seen very little advertising. We also know that once you get into pre-K, that's your opportunity to proceed, and there really isn't a way to get in further down the road. So of course, enrollment is down. So I guess my big take-home message is, we have invested heavily in this community. It is very special, taking away in a densely populated area for which there's infrastructure commitment is not doing anyone a service. Build a better program with us. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker will be Dr. Prish Patel.
And I asked my husband to speak for the time remaining. This is my husband, Prish Patel.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know how to follow that, that was really, really good. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to speak. I think, you know, we moved here specifically for this program, and what's really interesting is that there's this whole group of people in the corner over there that did the same thing. Almost everyone there moved here specifically for that program. You know, Ms. Escobar mentioned that her child went through this program, it was like her child's brain was on fire, right? And she learned tremendously, and our child, our oldest child, you know, is in that same kind of situation right now, where you can really see that she's growing tremendously, growing confidence. What we know about this program in terms of, if you're looking at return on investment, if you're looking at success metrics, we know that these students perform better on standardized testing than their peers. We know that they're amongst the best in, one of the best schools in Cabarrus County on standardized tests. So if you're looking at how well the program works to educate students, it is excellent. You know, I think the idea of shutting this program down when it's so well-established and so successful academically to address capacity concerns, which was kind of a subtext in some of the commentary that we heard, is really short-sighted. To really gauge the impact of something like this, you have to look beyond just the five-year timeline of enrollment that you're looking at, you have to look at all the things that go into, how are we recruiting people? We learned about this on our own because we want our children to be educated with something special. There was no advertising anywhere that allowed us to understand that this program was available. Only after we sought it out did we know that at all. You know, if, when we talk about community investment, you know, there are unintended positives to something like this. My wife and I joined this institution at Cabarrus Hospital here, and, you know, I'm a transplant cardiologist, I do heart failure. If you look at publicly reported data, in the last five years since I've been here, you can look at publicly reported data on Medicare that shows that literally hundreds of people are alive now compared with where they used to be five years ago, because people like my wife and myself work here. My wife brings clinical trials to save lives for oncology patients because she's the head of GI oncology. It takes one of these children learning Mandarin and starting a multinational business to eclipse any investment in the education that the board puts into these students in 10 years, 20 years. The timeline of horizon you have to look at is really different. And then when we talk about access to these programs, we talk about moving it somewhere else, you can see that, you know, just bringing it full circle here, and I have 10 seconds, everyone in that corner there is someone of color, right? You're taking away an opportunity that is not going to be available for us in the future and our other kids. So really, we're hoping that you guys reconsider. So thank you.
So our next speaker is Rob Sorullo. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board, Dr. Kopicki, and anybody watching at home. For those of you that don't know me, I am Rob Sorullo, or the guy with the baseball signs all throughout town during campaign season. Doing what's right by our children should never be political. There's real issues CCS faces, and then there's lazy, manufactured, cultural war topics. Let me put one of those to rest. Boys are not using girls' bathrooms at a documented rate in our school district, and it's time we start uniting behind the actual issues our schools face, ones in which we should all be able to fight for. It was an honor to run for this board in 2024 alongside candidates like Michelle Williams. You'd be hard-pressed to find a member of our community that's more dedicated to the task at hand, as shown by Michelle's unique commitment throughout the campaign season, coupled with her blend of personal and professional experience within the educational realm. Further, she will undoubtedly put in the work that others in the running were not willing to do. In not choosing Michelle Williams, we would be doing a disservice to not only our students, but our teachers, administrators, faculty, and all parents in the community. Michelle understands the need of all children, including those of our most vulnerable populations. My daughter falls in this bucket, and while I remain cautiously optimistic, the current board members' real-life experiences around atypical students will help create better environments for this underserved student body, I am absolutely certain that Michelle's vigorous work ethic would make Cabarrus County one of the best districts in the states for kids with special needs. In fact, there's no reason that we can't be a leader on the national level, but it starts by choosing the real problems to conquer and selecting those best fit and motivated, which is key, to take our district to a whole new level. Michelle Williams is that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Keesha Sandage. I guess welcome back to the podium, you've been there several times.
Hey, how y'all doing? I won't tell you my name, I won't say good morning or good afternoon, board, because that's going to waste time, precious time. But I will tell you this, I've sat in that seat, and I did a heck of a job as a board member. I returned phone calls, emails, I responded to people that didn't even think like me. Also in that seat, I was told by another board member that they couldn't vote for me, not because of how I work, or not because of my ability to do the job, but simply because I was a Democrat. Where we do that at? I guess we do that here in Cabarrus County. Tonight, you guys are faced with a decision that I have had to make before. I didn't choose a Democrat when I made that decision, and I know some of you have seen those notes. I chose a Republican, and I chose an independent, because they were the right people for the job right then and there. You got that in Michelle. That woman worked her behind off in this election season. She spared no unturned motion, no unturned anything. She continued to work and make sure that our children could see themselves represented in somebody. In 2020, I did the same thing. I didn't think that I could win, I didn't think that people were going to vote for me, but they wanted to see change on this board. This board doesn't look like the community that it's serving, and I don't care what you try to tell me. I feel like every single one of you has a passion to serve children in here, but not one of you can tell me what Black children experience in their homes, in their cultures. Not one of you could maneuver through Black families, through Black communities, without being looked at to determine whether or not they can trust you. And I think that's important to note when we're considering how we serve over 8,000 Black children in this district. That includes our children, that includes our teachers. Do you know I got emails simply because I was Black? People called me simply because I was Black and they knew they could trust me. So guess what? You guys won't get those calls. Michelle will. Michelle will get those calls, and those are important. I could pick up the phone, I could send an email and tell Dr. Kopicki the real problem so we can get to them and address them. But if you don't know those problems, you can't address them, and they will continue to go on, and they will affect every single member of this community. Tonight, you got the opportunity to change all of that. Look beyond party lines, look beyond, oh, I might not get reelected if I choose a Democrat. Look beyond that. Y'all are better. Do better. Thank y'all.
Our next speaker is Latasha Troy. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening. My name's Latisha Troy, and I am wanting to speak to you tonight, board. Dr. Kopicki, thank you for allowing me the time. I have two children in Cabarrus County Schools. I have a middle-schooler and I have a high-schooler at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, who is watching. He took civic literacy during the general election and has become very invested in not only local, but anything that's going on with our entire country. So when Michelle let me know that she wanted to run, I had questions. I asked her why, because I have concerns that need a plan, and I have questions that need answered. We moved from Charlotte in 2020, right in the middle of COVID, during, to Concord, and we were glad for the option to have our kids do virtual learning and even continue that as kids were allowed to go back in-person to school. But when we returned to regular learning, there were a lot of other challenges that we faced. So these are some of the things that I brought to her. We had staff changes at the elementary level for my daughter, controversy with the principal there. When my children went to open house, there was not a teacher in place at that time, so there were not enough teachers to service my child in the new school. There also have been a lot of frustration with the bus schedules, late buses, bus changes. My child has been on the wrong bus at times. So while there have been some changes with the app to help that, it's still extremely frustrating. And then recently, the redistricting of the schools completely wiped out the reason that we moved here to Concord from Cabarrus, to from Charlotte, because we picked schools specifically based on the neighborhoods and what we looked up, and that kind of all just went away. So I needed to hear some answers on what her plan was there. And so based on her experience, I did look up, she is an educator, and she's been in the classroom and taught teachers, so she knows hands-on what it means to shape those minds every single day and the magnitude of what that means. She also knows what it takes for these teachers to use their own resources to make sure that our kids have what they need. We also have to take a look at some of the plans that she has there. She's created plans as a part of the PTO for our teachers to have some relief at lunchtime, for our teachers to have those resources they need, and also programs to incentivize our students so that they want to excel academically. So we have a lot of other people as well that support our children. We have counselors, resource officers, that I've personally come to know, that I have had questions from them as well, that I asked Michelle, because I need to know that there's some type of thought or plan. Knowing isn't enough. There has to be a plan to make the action happen. And so all of those people are important to our students. Michelle has a plan. She has a plan to support them in their struggles as they go through adolescence. She has a plan to make sure they're safe with people like resource officers so they can focus on learning, and a plan for their emotional well-being. She's a mother of three, a lifelong educator and dedicated to her community, an active community leader, and I have no doubt her unwavering dedication will be an asset to the board.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Dr. Leonard Jarvis, or Reverend, Dr. Leonard Jarvis, are you here? There you are. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, board. I am the Reverend Dr. Leonard Jarvis. I've been here since 2016. I am a associate minister at the Macedonia Baptist Church and also a member of the Social Justice Committee, plus I have two grandkids in the system. I want to thank each of you for your service, your sacrifice, and your sageness, and I'm here to endorse Michelle Williams for the current vacancy. She possesses the credentials, the commitment, and the compassion. I really don't need to reiterate her qualifications, they speak for themselves. But I need to say this to you. Ms. Williams does not come with a political agenda, but a deep-hearted willingness to make the necessary sacrifices to improve the lives of our children. She is exceptionally sensitive to the needs of our children and the teaching community. She is committed to addressing the real needs and challenges presented in this tumultuous And I note here that only one of you have endorsed her. I find that odd, and I wonder, are some of you adopting the same mindset as your contemporaries on the county Board of Commissioners, who are bent on cleansing Black representation? And that's why we need DEI. I'm sure that many of you go to church and know Jesus tells everyone to love everyone. And when you go to church, because I'm going to deal with the elephant in the room, do you bow at the altar, "Make America Great Again," or the altar, "To love thy neighbor"? Do you bow at the altar, "Whites only"? Or the altar that says, "Whosoever will, let him come"? Pearl Bailey, who faced racism and discrimination, she said, "You will find yourself when you face the truth." The Bible says, "For he that loveth not his brother whom he has seen, how can he love God whom he has not seen?" Ms. Williams is one who will make a difference. She will not only enhance the reputation of this board, but she will offer insight and foresight. Lastly, as many have stated before, this board should reflect our community. So I say to you tonight, don't judge her based on the color of her skin, but base her on the content of her character and her credentials. Couple months ago, you could not support another Black woman, let's not make the same mistake. We deserve a voice on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker, and apologize for the pronunciation, Hou-Tang Feng. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. It's Hou-Tang. And I didn't expect this long night, but good luck to all your candidates, okay? A couple of the other parents, my son is currently enrolled in the Mandarin program at Cox Mill Elementary. I emailed all the board members last week, I have received a couple of responses already, thank you for that. And tonight, I would like to share my perspective as a parent regarding to the recommendation to phase out this program. And just like every parent, I want my child to succeed, and I believe the dual-language program is one of the best tools to help him. And Cox Mill's Mandarin program has consistently showed very strong academic results, and research also supports that the benefits of the dual-language education is huge. For example, a well-known study published in 2004 by Dr. Virginia Collier and Dr. Wayne Thomas titled "The Astonishing Effectiveness of Dual-Language Education for All" has been cited over 1,200 times, which is an incredible number for article for paper like that. It clearly shows that the dual-language program produced exceptional outcomes, not only for students directly enrolled, but also for teachers, parents, school organizations, and community as a whole. And I've brought the copies of this study for you to review. The report presented by Ms. Reeves and Ms. Whitaker highlighted concerns about the school capacity, but most students in the program live within the Cox Mill zone, as far as I know. So phasing out the program may not significantly impact the overcrowding issue, because families are unlikely to transfer their kids to another school 30 minutes away. Let's say if three kids are forced to not to select the program, and from each grade, that's 18 students for all the sixth grades, and that can move in the capacity from 125% to 123%, which is 2% drop. And I would like to see more detailed data, of course, in the late, in the future. And the report also mentioned a decline interest in the program, but enrollment for the kindergarten has already increased to 20. So I want to thank you all the teachers and staff for the build of the program. So I want to thank you all the teachers and staff for the build of the program, and they are making a huge difference for all the students here. So thank you very much for your time, and I hope that we can have a chance to continue the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Bamford. Good evening, welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Kapicki. My name is Deborah Bamford, I am a 37-year resident here in Cabarrus County, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you regarding my desire to see Shannon Payne Lancaster fill the vacant seat on the Board of Education. Her credentials and educational degrees are impeccable, and they speak for themselves. The focus of my remarks will be Shannon's character and integrity. Character shapes who we become and defines our impact on those around us. Character guides our choices during hard times and shows itself through steady actions over time. Strong character builds trust, earns respect, and creates lasting positive change in communities. And these qualities are exactly what Shannon will bring to the table as a member of the Cabarrus County School Board. Trust, respect, and lasting positive change. I've gotten to know Shannon well over the past two years. She has a passion to serve the people of Cabarrus County, which she has demonstrated through her many roles in the education field and beyond. Shannon is a woman of faith. She is level-headed, wise, calm, and steady. She is fiercely dedicated to the betterment of our community. She is hardworking. She does not waver in her convictions. Her decisions are well-thought-out, and she will not cave in when challenged to go against what she believes is right. She is kind-hearted and puts the needs of others before her own. Shannon is a person I see as the perfect fit to fill this position at this time. So it is for these reasons and many more, I respectfully ask that you vote for Shannon Payne Lancaster to fill this School Board vacancy, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is a very familiar person, Laura Blackwell.
Good evening, Board. My name is Laura Blackwell Lindsey. I am Vice Chair of the Cabarrus County Commission, and for six years proudly served in this vacant seat that you intend to fill tonight. I've heard it referred to as my seat, as Laura's seat. Let me be clear, this is not my seat, this is the people's seat. It's the voters' seat. And they spoke loud and clear at this last election, didn't they? Some of you have spoken repeatedly about doing what's best for the kids. I'm here to tell you that parents know what is best for the kids. And it's parents of this county who voted for four Republican members of this Board, because they knew that that was best for their kids. If there was a special election for this vacancy tonight, there is no doubt in my mind that Shannon Lancaster would win it. The parents, the voters, would pick her without hesitation. She grew up in Cabarrus County Schools, sent her own kids to Cabarrus County Schools, worked at Cabarrus County Schools, and retired from Cabarrus County Schools. I'm here tonight to endorse her, not for my seat, but for the people's seat, the voters' seat. Because there is no doubt in my mind, Shannon is who the voters would choose, and I ask you tonight to do the right thing and put Shannon Lancaster in this people's seat. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, to the second page. Rhett Whishell, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So I'm here to give my full support to a personal friend, Shannon Lancaster and her family. I've known them for years, I have a ton of respect for them. And I want to make a couple comments, and I also want to thank some people. So first of all, I would like to personally thank the legislature for passing the law that says it needs to be a partisan Board. And the reason for that is very simple. A lot of us have busy lives, and it means a lot to us to understand what is the foundation that each person that we are electing to go into some elected office stands on. And so when you call yourself a Democrat or you call yourself a Republican, you are sending a signal to those that are showing up to vote. We can't learn about every person that we vote for. So it is absolutely, I am super thankful that they did that, so that the community at large can understand each of those people that are running, where they stand as a foundation before they leverage their gifts and their talents that God gave them to show up and do things on behalf of every kid. So that's first. The second thing is, I'd love to thank all of you that are watching that voted, showed up in droves, and guess what? We now have an overwhelming majority, four people, that we elected in November that are all Republicans. The Republicans showed up in force, and that should send a very strong signal. And guess what? This is the first time that I can remember where all of the, we had a great primary as a Republican Party, and you all came out of that, and I know that you're all convicted to follow and align with the Republican platform. And that gives me great hope of what you're going to do tonight. Has nothing to do with the person that, I'm not against anybody, okay? I am just proud that we have a system that you're going to follow that allowed us to say, "Look, we're showing up in force, and we're going to get a majority School Board that is Republican." And I think we would all be flabbergasted, even the Democrats, if you didn't vote to elect a Republican to replace a Republican outgoing top vote getter, I might add, that won her seat when she was on this Board. And by the way, when we promoted her to County Commissioner, she was the top vote getter as a County Commissioner. So that is a huge signal, right? I have nothing against those of you who think that Ms. Williams is fantastic. What I do have issue with, I want to say, is that it almost sounds to me, a number of the speakers, that I'm a racist just because I'm a Republican and I want somebody that is white to win. So I would love for all those people to go watch their comments, because there's a number of them that did a great job of not bringing race into it. But I would ask you this, I would ask you to do this, to not judge Shannon by the color of her skin. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Lee Schuman.
So I guess I'm a registered--
Are you speaking as a group, or are you speaking--
I am speaking for a group.
Okay, so you'll have five minutes?
Thank you. I'm a registered independent, so I feel a little bit like a unicorn tonight. But I have to say that I believe a lot of people came out in this past election, regardless of all the party politics, because they wanted to see a change. They wanted to see some things done differently. Regardless of whether you got a Republican R beside your name, or a D, Democrat beside your name, our county was pretty clear in this last election how they voted. I would like to say that there were quite a few independents that voted in this election. That's the largest voting block in Cabarrus County. I personally have quite a few as part of our association that I had. And those folks have seen things happen a certain way in our county, and they wanted to see something different. They wanted to see more transparency, they wanted to see more accountability, they wanted to see more fiscal responsibility, because with fiscal responsibility becomes the ability to do more. We can't actually do things that we need to do unless we can prioritize that spending. And so I'm here tonight on behalf of Shannon Lancaster. I'm an independent, not a party politician. I'm here speaking for many people in our community who came and voted this past election, who pulled Republican primary cards and went and voted in the Republican primary. Shannon Lancaster is a dedicated educator. You've heard that all throughout tonight's meeting from everybody, you've seen her resume. She began in Stanley County as a teacher, she finished in Cabarrus County as a teacher. She has built an impressive foundation of expertise and qualifications. She holds numerous professional certifications, she has two master's degrees. Her credentials span all through K through 12 education in areas such as social studies and language arts and English. She's a certified international baccalaureate librarian. She has over 15 years of experience in Cabarrus County Schools alone during the time that she got those two master's degrees. Additionally, her research into issues like underrepresentation of minorities in gifted programs and equitable access to service highlights her commitment to what a lot of people don't think anybody on the Republican side can be committed to, inclusivity and equity in education. Shannon's leadership extends beyond the classroom. She's served in various roles such as PTO President at both elementary and middle school levels. She's been a member of a high school athletic booster club. Her active involvement in youth athletics and the Salvation Army show her commitment to building strong, supportive communities where families and students can thrive. Shannon is uniquely equipped to address the challenges facing Cabarrus County Schools. She understands the importance of supporting teachers, advocating for students, and ensuring policies that reflect a diverse needs of our community. She understands the parents' perspective. We have 35,000 students or more now in Cabarrus County. All those students have parents. I'm a proud supporter of Shannon Lancaster for this vacancy on the School Board. Her expertise, her dedication, her vision make her a leader that this school system and this community needs. I would hope that you would take not only the comments that you hear tonight, because these are the ones that are talking to you directly, face-to-face, but those that have emailed you, other people in the community that you've talked to. I understand more than anybody, I've been up here speaking to this School Board for, it feels like, over a decade. So I know how hard it is for people to come up here and preach that, and you can't talk back. So that's why I think engagement with our School Board members makes all the difference in the world. And I couldn't be happier with those of you that have won this past election. I think each and every one of you that have, have reached out to me or to someone that I know and engaged, and that means the world. And I think Shannon Lancaster is the right person for this job, because she does the same thing, regardless of who you are. And she has an unbelievable record of having education as her top priority and her number one passion. And if that isn't good enough for the School Board, I honestly don't know who is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Steinberg, another familiar face. Welcome back to the podium.
And this means you're almost done. So thank you for having me here tonight. It is the first meeting I've been able to attend since you were elected, and I want to say congratulations to all of you. I got to know you some during the election, and I'm very excited to see what we talked about and your goals come to fruition here during this time. As part of that, you know, I got to know a lot of you and share a lot of passions, especially with you, Melanie, around arts. But I also got to know Michelle quite a bit, and I actually started to know her almost two years ago, when she was in this room, starting to learn about the systems here in place, how to navigate those, because she is also an elementary school parent. That is one thing that you don't have on this Board. It is a unique position to be an elementary school parent in this district right now, as we are changing so much. In the last two years, my child has lost a choice program and moved schools. We have only been in this system, we are in our second grade year. That is a unique position that people who have been here in this community, while they have a wonderful background, haven't experienced. They don't understand that. They don't understand how that really rips up your family, really can rip up your life, really does a lot of trauma to your children. My child is still in counseling from the trauma inflicted on him last year by this That is something you need to know. Michelle not only listened to the issues that we are dealing with, but helped me figure out where to go and how to navigate, and honestly, was just a sounding board sometimes that I needed. She will be an excellent advocate, and she'll be able to work with you, and something that, a lot of stuff has been talked about, Michelle, but something I think needs to be said, she has been here and engaged and listening and learning for two years. She can hit the ground running with you, because she doesn't need to learn what you've been doing. She didn't just start thinking about it. She didn't just start after the election, when we realized the seat was going to be open. She's been learning, she knows, and she can hit the ground running with you. I have no doubt that she, along with you and your goals, you can find alignment and represent all of our county in an excellent way. I have 30 seconds, and so as I do that, I want to do a little plug for our DLI folks. My child is in DLI. It is an excellent program. I think we need to have it in every single elementary school here. Our children are thriving, and they are floating your scores. We have the best scores, and every elementary school is in your DLI programs. Don't let that fall, put more in, put the investment into our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is former Board Member Cindy Furtinbaugh. Thank you for coming and talking to us tonight, and welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Kapicki, and Board members. It's a little bit odd to be on this side of the dais. Today I come to you with thoughts about the Board Member vacancy. There are many qualified applicants, and I've honestly enjoyed hearing about them tonight through the different speakers. I've sat where you are seated for 18 years. I've helped select a person for a Board vacancy multiple times. Right now, you have a membership of three with Board experience and three new members. No amount of personal or work experience can prepare you all for what will come with being a Board Member. The saying of "You don't know what you don't know" comes to mind. I'm certain that every candidate can learn the duties and nuances of the Board, public school law, budget, and other details over time. But that takes time and situations to navigate, basically learning on the job. Board experience is extremely important and valuable at this juncture. It is imperative that you focus on the role of a Board Member for both your own work and fulfilling this vacancy. That role is described in the state statutes and in local policy. Policy 2000 Operational Goals of the Board states that the Board will make decisions with the Board's goals, objectives, and other principles as the guiding focus. Policy 2120 Code of Ethics for School Board Members states the need to uphold the integrity and independence of the Board Member's office. Your primary role is to serve the students and staff of the district. You must be dedicated to that role with every decision, everything else is secondary. Dr. Robert Kirk is uniquely qualified to step into this position and has historical district and Board knowledge. Not only did he work in various areas of Cabarrus County Schools, but he brings this military service background with attention to detail and negotiation skills, and ensuring that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. In addition, a Board Member with conversational Spanish skills would be a plus. Dr. Kirk served in the role of Chief of Staff in the Superintendent's Office for seven years. He was the conduit for Board Members to the Superintendent, Departments, and Schools. He prepared for and sat in on closed sessions, grievance hearings, and discipline hearings. He understands the importance of confidentiality and working to the best solution for the overall district, always keeping the student and staff focused. When we needed to fill a vacancy in the 2017 timeframe, Dr. Kirk was our choice, due to his background and demeanor. You need a consummate team player, someone who feels the weight of the Board Member role and thrives in it. Dr. Kirk can hit the ground running and be a resource to all other Board Members. He can be that colleague to call to review a policy or situation, just as I did many times. Thank you for consideration as you make this difficult decision.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker, Harry Lancaster. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, school board members. Thank you for your service to the community. My name is Harry Lancaster. I'm not related to Shannon Lancaster. We just held the first election where school board candidates were identified by party. This was an election in November where eight people ran for four open seats on the school board. These people ran because they had a strong interest in participating. They took their valuable time. They raised money. They put in the effort. Four people were selected, and four just missed. Now, a school board member was elected to county commission, and so you have to select a replacement. One solution would be to select one of the candidates who ran but just missed in the general election, a candidate who's already invested time and energy in running, and a candidate who has valuable classroom experience. In my mind, the person that has these characteristics is Michelle Williams. If you don't follow that suggestion, then here is another. Cabarrus County population is approximately 55% white. Everybody up here is white. 19% African-American, 13% Hispanic, 7% Asian, with some other smaller percentages. Furthermore, registered voter parties break down as approximately 28% Democratic, 33% Republican, and 39% unaffiliated. Our county is becoming increasingly diverse. If you don't select a candidate who actually ran in the November election, please select someone who will speak for the people in the county and the school system that are currently underrepresented on this board. Select someone who is independent and open-minded with classroom experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carol Anderson. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here to speak tonight. I'm here this evening to encourage you to vote, to place Michelle Williams on the Cabarrus County Board of Education. There are three reasons why I feel Michelle stands out among the candidates for the Cabarrus County School Board. First, she has the educational and experiential skills. Secondly, her communication is impeccable. And thirdly, adding her to the board will secure a member reflecting the makeup of our community and our student population. Michelle is more than qualified for this position. You've already heard about her degrees and her experience. In the recent election, I had the privilege of working directly with Michelle. Our Central United Methodist Women's Group invited her to a candidate forum. It was a nonpartisan forum for women. Michelle responded quickly to my emails, text messages, phone calls. She honored her commitment by showing up and speaking and showcasing her speaking skills. Communication is a real strength for Michelle. In addition, Michelle would bring to the school board someone with whom our students and their parents can relate. She just happens to be African-American. Cabarrus County Schools minority population is almost 58%. 58% minority. I ask you board members to take an honest look at the board as it exists today from a diversity perspective. I encourage you to think of our students, their parents, and our community, and what would be best for them. I would not be here advocating for her if I did not believe that you, representing us now as our public servants, were not open to welcoming her as a team member and acknowledging all the extraordinary benefits that she would bring to the table. Please consider this rare opportunity and embrace it. This is a gift of immense value. It is your opportunity to open a door, to provide a future of enlightenment and hope for us here in this room and for all our students. I advocate for Michelle Williams. Put her on your team. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And our final speaker listed is John Paul. Thank you for coming, and welcome to the podium.
I'm a 20-year resident of Cabarrus County. I'm here to voice my support for Shannon Lancaster to fill the vacant seat of Laura Lindsay. Although it appears you are faced with candidates of equal footing, Shannon is the more formidable choice. Our education system is in a critical situation, and Shannon is the one who will be best to work with this board in bringing about the necessary remedies that will obtain the best future for the children and teenagers of our county. She is the one who has the character and the tenacity to deliver a better education for our county. She has the right heart for the task at hand. Also, as the citizens of this county voted for Laura, Shannon is the best match to honor that election for the direction they wanted the school system to go. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to thank every one of our speakers tonight and our audience members for your civility. I'm going to call you. 10-minute recess, is that enough time to go take a break? What? They're going to speak after the recess. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we will move on to the next section where our candidates will speak to us.
Okay, welcome back to our Board of Education Business Meeting. We've just gotten through our guest speakers and we're moving on to our presentations by our five finalists. And we're going to get right in it since we've been here for quite some time. We're going to do this alphabetically. And our first candidate is Mrs. Allen. Come on up. The podium is yours. Is there a red light? Are we good?
There's one. There's a red light now.
You are good.
Good evening, Cabarrus County.
Oh, she's working on the timer. Give her one second.
Okay. All right. So, good evening, Cabarrus County. I'm honored to stand before you all to speak about the passion I have to be a part of Cabarrus County Board of Education and its students. The love I have for people and the children of County Cabarrus County is evidenced in how quickly I chose to be involved in the school community. Family is important. Family makes a community a home. Belonging to a community matters. Cabarrus County Schools is experiencing the same problems that New York State experienced 20 years ago. As a teacher for over 35 years, I see children who need to learn how to think critically and how to respect their teachers. Their desire to learn to read, to communicate, to write, to apply math and science needs to be sparked and challenged. This is achievable. We need to build and maintain programs of excellence. Our buildings must be safe and secure. Let us continue to move forward as a community that puts families first. We must encourage parental involvement. It's important to guide parents to understand their role is vital to the development of their children and towards the future their children will inherit. Likewise, the board's policy on management of school behavior, along with the policy on parental involvement on student issues, seeks to address the home when things have gone wrong. The safety of our students and staff is extremely important. To improve that, we need to encourage school-home connections. As the district moves to adopt a sound reading program, one that is skills-based with an emphasis on phonics, word readiness, vocabulary development, fluency, and high-interest reading content, let's keep in mind that it be cost-effective over the long haul and improve the literacy of our children. Our pre-K and elementary-age students need activities that immerse them in the opportunity that encourages communication and experiential learning, not more time on Chromebooks. When standards and expectations are set and consistently applied, our students and their families will begin to believe that Cabarrus County can become a thriving community where families matter, their voices are heard, and education and teachers are respected. I am extremely qualified. Not only am I a teacher in Cabarrus County, but I am certified as an elementary teacher, a special education teacher from elementary through high school, I hold a Master of Science in Education and Administration certifications in school administration and supervision. With that being said, I withdraw my name tonight from consideration. I firmly stand behind Shannon Lancaster for the appointment to this board. She is not only qualified for the position, but she is one of the few people, along with myself, who worked hard to get Republicans elected to this school board. My name is Deborah Allen, and I announce my candidacy for the 2026 School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done there. Okay, Mr. Hartzell is next. And thank you for your dedication and being interested in this position. We'd like to hear from you, what you have to say.
All right, for the sake of time, I wrote it down. My name is Bubba Hartzell. I was born and raised in Cabarrus County. I attended Odell Elementary, then Northwest Cabarrus Middle, then I graduated from Northwest Cabarrus High School in 2004. Started my educational career in 2013 at Northwest Middle School. Also served as head football coach and head wrestling coach over nine seasons. In 2021, I left CCS for an opportunity with KCS where I served in many roles, including instructional assistant, interim teacher, behavioral support specialist that I currently do, while also serving on leadership teams and working with exceptional children. This is my 12th year in education and my fifth year working in a Title I school. I live in Mount Pleasant, and I'm a parent of two children who are fourth-generation attendees of Cabarrus County Schools, one at Mount Pleasant Elementary and one at Mount Pleasant Middle. My wife is also an educator at AT Allen. I am a licensed North Carolina real estate broker, small business owner of a real estate investment company, and I also own and operate my own real estate firm. I have dedicated most of my life to giving back, not for money, power, or for political agenda, but to make a difference in my community. I have been a strong advocate for education, parental rights, and doing what is best for each student. I have a passion for athletics, and I've had the opportunity to coach and enhance the learning experience for many student athletes. With the framework of athletics changing nationally, we have to protect our women's sports and prepare for NIL in our high schools. It is long overdue for CCS to stop limiting opportunities to sixth-grade students and let them participate in athletics, which is allowed by the North Carolina DPI. I take pride in being knowledgeable in NCDPI guidelines as well as CCS policies. I believe in making educated, common-sense decisions while standing up for everyone's constitutional rights. When I ran in the primary, I received the next highest vote total to the four candidates who were elected in the general election. The Board of Education needs someone... Oh, I'm the... Sorry. I'm the only finalist who currently works full-time in public education. The Board of Education needs someone that is in the classroom every day and has current knowledge of daily happenings in a school. I would appreciate the opportunity to serve the students, teachers, support staff, and the community to make CCS a safe and great district for all. In closing, I would like to thank everyone who has supported me in any way, and to the board members, I ask you to please consider the importance and impact of your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartzell. And you can... Yes, you can clap for him. Our next candidate or finalist is Dr. Kirk. And thank you for your interest in the position, and welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Chairman Walter, Vice Chairman Mills, distinguished board members, Dr. Kopicki, our viewing audience. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to introduce myself and present myself as a positive addition to the Cabarrus County Schools Board to fill the vacancy left by Ms. Lindsay. As you all know, our school system boasts of a stellar track record, as we've heard this evening and the past several months, tremendous accomplishments by the school system. The leadership of a committed school board focused on our students' best interest is at play here. My contribution to this underlying character of leadership that y'all display every day among the board cadre is where the synergy of my contributions will best pay off. From my CV in your possession, you can see reflected the results of effective, accomplished leadership across many theaters of life, such as my enlisted officer activities in the United States Navy, my work in business as a general manager of a multimillion-dollar export firm out of Raleigh, my 17 years as an educator within Cabarrus County Schools in the classroom, in principalship, and the county office, my executive roles in nonprofit businesses at the YMCA and Dream On Three, all of these, the success of Crownless efforts achieving unity of purpose and mission. Unity is not a word we hear too often in today's society. Last week during the superintendent's comments, as Dr. Kopicki was celebrating January as the School Board Appreciation Month, he described one of your attributes as being a bridge between the community and the school system. Very apropos, sir, very apropos. Key to my personal philosophy of leadership that I bring to the table is the one that embraces a posture of learning. You cannot lead what you don't understand. You cannot understand if you do not listen. You cannot listen if you're not in tune with the voices being led. I think last week, Ms. Escobar lauded the candidate who is present and dialed in to those in her community, and riffing off of the business model of management by walking around. I would say leadership by walking around, that's leadership, that's effective leadership, and that's where I would play in, and that's where the work is, be where the action is. This very evening, Chairman cautioned those interested in applying for this position to be aware of the level of commitment required. To work hard is oftentimes thankless, but you've got to be committed to making tough decisions. Having had the pleasure of serving this board a few years back, I agree with that assessment. It's a tough gig, and yet, here I am before you wanting to work alongside you. Thank you for your gift of listening ear and an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kirk. Our next finalist is Mrs. Lancaster. Welcome to the podium. Thank you for your willingness to join us on the board.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Shannon Lancaster. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you and share a little bit about my background and my desire to serve on the Cabarrus County School Board. So, a little bit about my background. I have a bachelor's degree in English and History, a master's degree in Education, a master's degree in School Administration, and a master's degree in Library Science. I have 10 educational certifications, and I'm working on my doctorate. I have worked at every level from elementary school to middle school to high school and community college level. I have worked at every position from administrator, classroom teacher, to media specialist, to AIG teacher, to EC teacher, and EC department head. I have coached, driven buses, been a curriculum specialist, and testing coordinator. One of my most favorite positions, though, was being a mentor for new teachers. I have a passion for beginning teachers and keeping them in the profession. I currently have an active teaching license and just left the classroom three years ago. I taught during COVID, and I know how that changed education. I was a media specialist during this time, and because we were remote, students couldn't come into the media center, so I took the media center to them. I developed an online digital library for them to use at home. I have worked from Roald to Bethel and everywhere in between, and I figure I have touched over 3,000 students' lives in my career. And I don't say these things to boast or brag, but to illustrate that I know education in our school system. So, I would be a servant leader. When I was an administrator, I was young, in leading a faculty and staff twice my age. I learned to ask, what can I do to help you? On the board, I would be a respected colleague, and I would be transparent so that the public and elected officials could trust our decisions. I also bring the unique advantage of being a business owner. I've owned my own business for over 25 years. The success of this business is on me. I can't pass the buck to upper level because I am upper level. I'm used to making tough decisions. I attend to Cabarrus County Schools. My children attend to Cabarrus County Schools. I taught in Cabarrus County Schools. I love this school system, and I want what's best for it. I am not a politician, nor do I want to be a politician. I have never run for public office, nor do I intend to run for public office. But tonight, standing here before you, I am in a season of my life when I have the time, the flexibility, the energy, and experiences to devote to this board. I am not perfect by any means, but I promise I will give this position 100% over the next two years, and I promise that I will put children first in every decision I make. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last finalist is Mrs. Williams. Welcome. And thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you so much. Good evening, board members. I'm Michelle Williams, and I stand before you not only as a parent, but as someone deeply invested in our schools. As a proud mother of children in a Cabarrus County school, a certified teacher with a master's degree in literacy, and a dedicated member of our PTO Board, I have listened to the concerns of the parents and worked hand-in-hand with our staff. I know the struggles and successes, the hopes and the challenges our schools face right now, and that's what fuels me to advocate for our children and staff. Throughout my campaign, I focus on these pillars. Growth. We have over 30,000 kids in our county. We must ensure our district has adequate facilities, staffing, addressing deferred maintenance, the mandarin program, academic resources, sports and arts programs, and other tools to support every student's learning, which impacts achievement. Teacher and staff retention. To attract and retain good talent, we need to listen to our teachers. We need to be proactive. We need to provide robust professional development and a nurturing work environment for all of our staff. It's critical for long-term success. Physical and mental safety. With the rising rates of mental health struggles amongst students, it's crucial we address both physical and emotional safety in our schools. Every student deserves to feel supported and empowered to learn. Equity and inclusion. I'm committed to ensuring all teachers and all students have the resources they need to succeed. Our AIG students, our general education population, and our most vulnerable population in our EC department. We have got to work together to closely achieve a gap through targeted interventions to make sure every student is set up for success. Lastly, I know how to ensure fiscal responsibility. It's about maximizing the impact of the dollar to go toward what really matters, which is our students. I bring something to this role that is often overlooked, which is a parent's perspective. I am not just speaking from the past. I actually live this every single day. My years on the PTO Board have helped me build strong collaborative relationships with teachers, staff, and parents, and I am speaking in the present tense. I've connected with families from the Logan community to Mount Pleasant and everywhere in between to find out the strengths and the challenges that our families face. What sets me apart is this. I don't just talk the talk, I walk it. I participated in a school board training in Raleigh, months of nonpartisan training in Raleigh, and I'm fully engaged with the issues our schools face today. One of the most important things I've heard from staff members across the county, both online and in person, is how crucial it is for them to have someone on the board who's physically present, a person who is truly listening, who is walking the halls, and who is engaged with the day-to-day challenges and successes in our schools. And I am that person. I am here tonight because I believe in the whole child. I believe in the potential of our schools, and I'm committed to rolling up my sleeves to ensure every student has the opportunities they need to succeed. It's my calling. Thank you.
Your passion comes through loud and clear. So, again, board members, we have a very difficult decision. These are all wonderful candidates and wonderful finalists. So, we are going to move on to our next item, which is reviewing the voting process to make sure that we all completely understand how it's going to work, and I am going to hand that over to Mr. Eisenhower to go over with us.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. So, just as a refresher for everyone, we talked about this at the December 9th Business Meeting. As everybody remembers, the policy code in question here is 2115, which is unexpired term fulfillment, and I'll read it out because it is short. All vacancies in the membership of the Board of Education caused by death, resignation, or otherwise will be filled by a person appointed by the remaining members of the Board to serve until the next election of Board members, at which time the remaining unexpired term will be filled by election. So, what that essentially means is that this Board, the remaining members, the six of you, have the right and obligation to choose the person to fill that vacancy. At the December 9th Board Meeting, we discussed this process. The chair presented a draft process that was reviewed and discussed by the Board. After discussion, the Board voted to approve that process as presented by the chair. Following that meeting, we made a few tweaks. I would... What I would call clarifying changes, non-substantive changes, that were really designed to match the discussion that was held at the December 9th Board Meeting. I did circulate to this Board a revised version of that process, as well as a red line showing those limited changes. In light of those, what I would call non-substantive changes, we are bringing that process back before the Board this evening for a vote. Before we get to that stage, kind of wanted to walk through where we are right now in the process. This was a seven-step process. We have now, before tonight, completed steps one through four successfully. Tonight, we just went through five, which was the finalists gave their three-minute presentation, and before that, the public had the opportunity to weigh in during the public comment period. So, we have now successfully completed the first five steps of this process. We are now at step six. We are now at step six. So after the presentations and the public comment, the next step will be to vote. The way the process is set up is each board member will announce the name of a finalist they would like to see fill the seat. If the same individual is named by four or more board members, then voting is concluded. This is a majority decision, so it would take four of six votes. If no finalist receives four votes, then another round of voting will take place with the two finalists who received the highest number of votes. Or if three or more finalists received the same number of votes, then with all such finalists receiving the highest number of votes. So for instance, if there was three board members name one individual and two board members name another individual, then there would be a second vote just involving those two. If there's two-two-two, for example, then all three of those names would move forward to the second vote. The next item would be if there's still a lack of majority, or for instance, a tie. So it could be a three-three vote, a four-two vote, or sorry, a three-three vote, a two-two-two vote. We just can't get to a majority on the second round, then that is when a board member will need to make a motion that a particular finalist fill the vacancy. That would then require another board member to make a second, and then thereafter, the board would vote yes or no on that individual motion, as a typical motion would be considered. And then this process would go on until a new board member is selected. Last item would be if a board vacancy is filled with either the first or second vote, meaning before you got to a motion, then we would need to do a formal motion followed by a second and a vote to accept that selected individual to fill the unexpired term. And just for further clarification, this is serving the final two years of Mrs. Lindsay's term, so this will be from 2025 now through November of 2026. Realize that was a good bit of information there. If anybody has any questions specifically under number six, happy to discuss that.
Ms. Escobar.
So I want to thank the chair for adding this to the discussion, to the agenda, after I submitted the request last week. I'm not trying to change the process. I just want to make it clear how it has evolved, and so thank you for that explanation. I just want to make sure that if we're changing things or doing things, that as a board, we're a high-functioning board, and that we're clear with the public about how processes are done. Last week, Board Member Kat Bonsmore discussed the training everyone received at the North Carolina School Board Association. I also reached out to them to talk to them about some of the training that I received because that's where I learned that first month that I was a school board member of the value of a high-functioning board and how board behavior matters. A study was done where it showed school boards in high-achieving districts are different in their actions and beliefs than those in low-achieving districts. I also reviewed the orientation binder that you all received from CCS with materials from the North Carolina School Board Association. And in it, it says, "Your first responsibility is to every student in your district." In Chapter Four, on "How Am I Going to Work with This Board?", Page 18, Question Six, says, "What is the most important consideration when making a decision?" And the answer is, "The board's primary consideration should always be the impact a decision will have on students." In Chapter Five, which is called "You Have Homework Too: The NCBA Board Member Code of Cooperation," there's a list of things that we're supposed to do. I'm going to highlight two. Avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using the board member's position on the board for personal or partisan gain. Always remember that a board member's, as board members, first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of students attending the public schools. I share these reminders because of my desire, as a board member, to work with all of my colleagues. At NCSBA, someone said, "We are in an arranged marriage," and the voters were the matchmaker. And as we make the decision about who will join us, we need to make sure they understand this role. As a Board of Education member, we are paid for our service. Our salary this year will be $7,272 plus a $636 travel stipend. I will share, I am very concerned about the influence of the Republican Party Chair on this process. His role is to advance the power of his party. As part of his role, he has had the Republican Party endorse his wife for this empty seat. And to be clear, this is a nonpartisan seat we are filling. We all took an oath to be school board members. In this role, politics and power should not be part of the decision-making process. If there are four votes in support of his wife, the headline from today's vote will be, "Republican Party Chair's Wife Fills Open Seat." What is communicated to the public? The board is interested in power and politics and not kids in classrooms. The ramifications of such a vote will undermine the governing of this board and our impact on classrooms. The highly educated and talented staff we rely on to teach our students will doubt our board intentions, which could affect retention and hiring. I want to be on record to say I am uncomfortable with our board financially benefiting the Republican Party Chair's household and his involvement in this process. The vast majority of emails I've received from the public focused on qualifications of applicants. I have only received one about politics, although tonight we did hear several regarding politics. Sadly, the voices of many will be muted if politics and power win. And what is devastating is what impact it will have on the educational welfare of students. Students are our first priority. Your first responsibility is every student in your district.
Obviously, thank you for your passion and your thoughts. Does any other board members have any comments on? No? You can comment on what, we're talking about the process. We're going to have to need a motion and a second to approve the process at this point. Anybody else? Sam?
I make a motion that we accept the process. I don't know who submitted it, but the process that was submitted today, tonight.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, so we've now adopted the process, and we're going to move on to the next item, which is following that process and going through the votes. So at this point, we will go, each board member will give us the name of the finalists they would like to see in the seat. They can explain their reasoning why for that, or they don't have to. But we're going to go through if we can get four individuals selecting one of our finalists. That'll be the end of round one. If we don't, we're going to have to go to a round two. So are we ready? Okay, I'm going to start with Catherine.
Okay. As I stated last week, I am going to support Shannon Lancaster. And as I said, we go all the way back to the Odell days, and we both are graduates of Cabarrus County Schools and both worked in the school system. And I do know her character, and I know her passion for children. And I think after hearing her tonight, what really stuck out to me was she taught during COVID, and COVID changed teaching for our teachers, and she can relate to that. Also, I also know how hard it is to start a business from scratch, and that's what she did. And we do need business owners on this board. So I do think she's what's best for our children, and I support Shannon Lancaster.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore and Mr. Tredway.
I am supporting Dr. Robert Kirk.
Did you want to say any more than that, or you're good? Okay, I guess I'll give my thoughts, and it's a tough decision. These are wonderful people, and it's a hard decision. And yes, experience does help, but every one of them had something unique to bring to us. But when I sit there and I think about it, at least as a board chair, the most important thing to me is our relationship with the county commissioners and our elected officials because they provide the funding. We have to have a partnership, and the only person that really can do that for us in the best way would be Shannon Lancaster. So that would be the person I'm supporting.
I've had a lot of conversations over the last couple of weeks. This has been hours and hours of work. I've appreciated every email that I've got. I hope that I responded to all of them. I've had in-person conversations and phone conversations. We've got a great set of candidates. Any one of these individuals would serve very well in that seat. But let me just kind of thumbnail a way a lot of these conversations go. It goes, "I would like you to support my candidate for reasons A, B, and C." And I go, "Well, you know, we've got a good set of candidates, and here's a candidate over here that has A, B, and C." And then they tell me, "Yeah, but I want you to support my candidate." And that's fair, but what we need to understand is there's some X-factor that's leaning you towards that particular candidate. And for some of you, it's party affiliations. For some of it, maybe it's racial representation. And I'll tell you what my X-factor is. When I first ran for this race, we were coming out of COVID. We're actually kind of in the middle of COVID. We're still dealing with it. And what this school system needed more than anything was to recover the trust of this community. And there's a lot of ways that we've lost the community's trust. And I think that our academics is one of the areas that we're struggling. I appreciate all the teachers. My wife is a teacher. Please don't think that I'm putting the blame on teachers, but we all have to work together to address these issues and let the public know that they can trust the people that are sitting on this board to get this important work done. And so for me, even though all of these candidates are very well-qualified, the person that I think comes into that seat and this community looks at and says, "That's a good choice. That's somebody that I can trust to do the work," is Dr. Robert Kirk, and that's why I'm supporting him.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, Ms. Escobar.
I support Dr. Kirk.
Do you want to give any more explanation than that?
I can't. We can't have Ms. Lancaster. I mean, she said she was transparent, and she didn't tell us who she really is. How can you sit here and support somebody who isn't honest? We need honesty. We need people who are straightforward. I need to do the best thing that I can do to support this community so that this person who was not transparent with us tonight is not on this board.
Okay. Ms. Freeman.
Okay. First of all, I do want to thank all of you for your emails. I did read every one, and I hope I responded to all of you. Sometimes I'm interrupted, and I don't push the send button when I thought I did, but I do value, I do value your feedback. I thank you for all of you who took the time to come tonight. And I will tell you, this is something, you hold us accountable. I understand that. But for me, I am accountable to one, and I have made no secret about that on my campaign or anything else. I am first and foremost a Christian, and I think God holds me to a higher standard than any of you here would hold me to. And for that reason, I prayerfully considered these. I knew the arguments that would be here tonight, and I see that one of the glaring ones is a racial issue. I grew up singing the song, "Jesus loves the little children, all the children of the world. Red and yellow, black and white, they are precious in His sight. My color does not prevent me from loving somebody of another color or delivering the best I can for that child. And I don't care if they're rich or poor or what color they are. That is where I'm coming from. So I'm going to take that off the plate when I consider who I will consider on this." So I made my own rubric, I guess you could say. And mine was qualifications, the time they have vested in this community, their experience, their passion, and their character. And I will tell you, all things were not equal. There are some that rose to a higher qualifications. They rose to a higher experience level. Now, all being equal there, then we still have to consider character. We have to consider passion. I campaigned with all these people. I know their passion. I campaigned with Michelle Williams. I know her passion. But, and everybody up here represents a family who has had or has children in the school system. That was one of the commonalities of the emails. We need somebody with parents that have children. I even had children in the system. And I do today have a grandson who is at Pitts Elementary. So that comes off in the consideration of the makeup of the board. As far as I'm concerned, that's well-represented. Everybody up here represents them. So I'm going to, so whether we like it or not, and one of the things which I thought was interesting was we have called it a nonpartisan seat because it was nonpartisan when it was filled the first time. But every one of you has referenced the election, which was a partisan election. And quite frankly, we're up here because the voters have a mandate. They do. And I can't ignore that mandate. And to be quite honest, the last time there was an appointment for this seat, and I've heard discussion that maybe you should fill it with the next vote getter or go down the line. Well, I was the next vote getter, and I didn't get appointed, and that was a nonpartisan. Okay? So it doesn't always work that way, and I'm good with that. I'm okay with that. I wish there were more within one seat, and it is. It's a tough decision. But for me, the qualifications were not equal. The experience was not equal. I don't doubt anybody's character who is running tonight. But if we had been given blank resumes with no names and no color attached, this would be my choice. So I can't say that it weighed in on any of this. And frankly, my personality, I don't weigh in color on things. I work and volunteer in a Title I school. I love those kids, and they love me. I can cross those barriers, whatever perceived barriers are. But like I said, there's not anybody up here who didn't campaign for the children. I mean, everybody had that in their slogan, "I'm all about the children." Everybody would say that if they're running for school board. I mean, that's just the truth of the situation. So based on qualifications, based on experience, and not based on color, but based on character, I will support Shannon Lancaster because she does rise above in the qualifications, and she does rise above in the experience. because she does rise above in the qualifications, and she does rise above in the experience.
Thank you. So, Mr. Eisenhower, we have a 3-3 tie.
That's correct. So per the process that was just approved, we did not have anybody get four or more votes. So we are to 6C, which is if no finalist receives four votes, then another round of voting will take place with just the two finalists who received the highest number of votes. So in the next round, you will need to either cast your vote for Mrs. Lancaster or for Dr. Kirk.
Okay, do we want to take a break to think about it, or do we want to go ahead and vote for the second round?
I'd like to have a short recess.
Okay. We're going to have a five-minute, is that enough, or 10? 10-minute recess, we'll be back at 9:40. Okay, welcome back. We were in a recess after our first votes. And I'll hand it back to Mr. Eisenhower for what's our next step.
Sure. So we are at step 6C. Since no finalist received four votes in the first round, we will now proceed with the second round of voting. Only the two finalists who received the highest number of votes, which are Mrs. Lancaster and Dr. Kirk, can be voted on at this time. So we'll need to go back through that same process. If you guys want to have any discussion, you can do so. Otherwise, just proceed with the vote.
Okay, thank you. I will proceed on this side this time. So Ms. Freeman?
Shannon Lancaster.
Mrs. Escobar?
Dr. Kirk, because he's been honest from the beginning of this process.
Mr. Mills?
I appreciate Sam and Pam's support of Dr. Kirk. I do believe very strongly that he is a man of integrity and humility and someone that I respect a great deal. But I have also, to your concerns, had conversations with the leadership of the Republican Party when they were in this process of selecting who they were going to recommend for this seat. And I cautioned them that it puts us in a very difficult position of placing the chairman's wife on this board. It looks like a conflict of interest. And I talked to Shannon personally, as I've talked to everybody in this, all the candidates. And I told her that if you end up getting this nomination and being appointed to this seat, you're going to have two years to prove to everybody what I see in your resume, that you are qualified for this position, highly qualified for this position, and you do care deeply about this school, this school system. And so in the interest of moving this process along and appointing somebody who is highly qualified to this seat, I choose Shannon Lancaster.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. I'll give my vote as well to Mrs. Lancaster. You know, this funding, we can't do anything without funding. We have to have a partnership. This was a seat that Laura held, and Laura has come up here, and she's said the person that she would like to work with is Shannon Lancaster. That's got to hold a little weight because Laura doesn't go away. She's there at the county commission, and we need her. We need her help and need her partnership. So those are my reasons. So, Mr. Treadway?
This is regrettable. I'm still supporting Dr. Kirk.
And then Ms. Moore?
I still support Shannon Lancaster.
Okay, well, that does break a tie. So we now have a 4-2. What is our next step?
Our next step is now under seven. Once a new board member is selected, if not already done so by motion, we need to request a motion to accept the selected individual to fill the unexpired term.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept...
We need a motion and a second to vote, yes.
We need a motion to accept Shannon Lancaster to fill the vacant seat for the two-year term?
Correct.
Can I have a motion for that?
I move, we accept Shannon Lancaster.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Freeman for that. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Mrs. Moore. I guess I would say aye. Those in favor say aye, but I think I need you to raise your hand. So if you're in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. If you're opposed, please raise your hand. 4-2. That motion passes.
All right. So then the last item would just be that Mrs. Lancaster would take her seat at the work session on Monday, February 3, and complete the oath of office at that time.
Okay, well, congratulations. We will see you next month up here. No, the meeting is not over. I'm sorry about that, not to confuse anybody. But for Mrs. Lancaster, she will join us up here next month. All right, so we are going to move on to Section 10, which is the approval of the consent agenda. And we did have one item that came off of that consent agenda. But the remaining items include the budget amendments, the first read and second read policies, the EOC summer program, and the guaranteed maximum price amendments for Colton Webb and Mary Frances Wall. So we will need a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Melanie, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed the consent agenda? Okay, consent agenda passes. So we're now to our action items. And the first ones would be policies for first read. Whoops, where are we? The program track was put to the end, so we'll get to that. So 11.01, policies for first read. And we'll welcome back Sandy Ward. And this is pretty simple because it's just a technical edit that we didn't get to see last time, thanks to Ms. Escobar pointing that out. And that would be for... Any comments or questions on that one?
Can we revisit this policy another time? I would just had questions about reducing waste and those kind of things.
So as a board member, yes, you could ask that a policy be reviewed by the policy committee?
I just want to know if there's any... Anything in motion for these goals? You know, I can see the others, but having been at the schools, I know that there's a lot of waste. And I just wondered if there's anything that we are doing now to do that. Does that come up under the nutrition person, maybe? I don't know.
I would suggest, Ms. Freeman, that we... I would recommend that we approve these this evening.
Okay.
And I will take into consideration your interest in reducing waste for nutrition.
Okay.
And I'll review some of the policies with Dr. Ward. We'll come back to the board with some of those recommendations. And if we need to adjust any policies, we can make those adjustments during the policy committee meetings, if you're okay with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready. Okay. Did I have a motion and a second? Motion? I need a motion to approve these, this one on first, for free. Motion by Mr. Treadway? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Freeman. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, that one passes, and we're on to 11.2, which is the Cox Mill Elementary School Flooring Replacement Project. And we still have Mr. Taylor. Are you still with us? You are. So we actually have two of those, so we'll vote on them separately.
Yes, sir. It's two flooring replacements. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Mills?
I apologize for making you sit through all of that to get to this, but I thank you for answering my questions, and I don't have any further questions on this.
No problem. I can speak on floors for hours if you like.
Maybe you'll get Pam excited about flooring.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, do you need a motion and a second to approve the Cox Mill Flooring Replacement?
So move. Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Treadway, second by Mr. Mills. Okay, motion by Mr. Treadway, second by Mr. Mills. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, that motion passes, and we'll do the same thing for 11.03. And that's the Weddington Hills flooring replacement. Do we have any comments on that one? Nope.
Make a motion. We accept this.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Treadway, a second by Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, that motion passes as well. And then the one that we took off of consent is 11.04, was the program choice.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time. And, Ms. Reeves, you're here. Thank you for sticking with us.
Good evening.
So we've taken that off consent. We've had some people speak to us. Is there anything you'd like to say based on the feedback that they provided to us?
Don't have any additional comments at this time.
Okay, any questions from board members? Ms. Escobar?
There was questions tonight from, from the public about overcrowding and not understanding. So can you just explain, because this was a question that I had asked, but can you explain what happens when, if, if kids sign up for Mandarin, whether there's 20 kids in a classroom or there's 10 kids in a classroom, that Mandarin classroom cannot be used for the general public?
Correct.
Right? So explain how the, if, if by removing the program choice from this school, not removing the program.
Correct.
But removing it from the school would increase capacity for Cox Mill, for the general population?
Absolutely.
So, so I want to be real clear about this too, because some things were said this evening, and I don't know if it was a communication issue or misunderstood, we are not eliminating the Mandarin program. That is not the intention. It will not be eliminated. We have done this, and the board knows this, and for those who are new, I mean, with all respect, you're gaining speed at a, at a very fast rate in terms of your learning curve here. We've been looking at program choice for two, two and a half years in terms of looking at the value of program choice, the enrollment in program choice, the cost of program choice. Capacity is, is one issue. It's not the issue. We're not moving it out of Cox Mill because of capacity. That is a variable because Cox Mill is at 125% capacity right now. So with that, and that's an area that continues to grow, continues to have kids enrolling. Need I remind the board that we just put two modulators there this year to start the school year to address capacity issues? So that was one consideration, but it was not the only consideration. The other consideration, and Ms. Reeves did a great job last week in talking about the enrollment, the enrollment has dropped 55% over the last five years. It wasn't a one-year study. It wasn't a two-year study. It was a five-year trend. It's dropped 55% at Cox Mill. No one wants to eliminate a program, and we're not eliminating it. We are consolidating that program to go to Harrisburg Elementary, where conversely, there's been about a 50% increase in enrollment. We've also said we're going to phase this out over four years. So we could come back to the board and say, hey, you know, there's been a dramatic increase, and maybe we have to switch it. Who knows what the future holds? But right now, when you look at all the variables that go into a program choice situation, the Mandarin program, the bottom line is, you cannot continue to, I'll compare, this might not be the best analogy, but if you go to a restaurant and you look at the dessert menu, you can't have everything on the dessert menu. You got to pick one. You can't have every program choice that you continue to support if the numbers don't back it up. There's a giant cost to this. Our county commissioners were here this evening, and they've also told us point-blank to be, you know, that their financial situation is not the best. So I don't, I'm not putting words in their mouth, and they have not said this to me, but I don't, if you reverse this decision, I'm going to say to them, what are we doing with program choice? Because we have other recommendations that are going to be coming your way to address other issues in the decision to make program choice stronger, not weaker. By consolidating this program, you're making it stronger for the enrollment that exists. Again, it's a four-year phase out, so we're not eliminating it anytime soon. I think we're being fair and judicious in our recommendation. And again, there is giant financial costs that come with this, and we talked about that. It's not a, yes, it's a capacity issue as one variable, but it's not the only variable. There are so many things that go into this. Sarah talked about the fact that we had a, it was mentioned I did that we didn't ask anybody. They were caught off guard. We did a survey. We did that survey out there for almost three weeks. We extended the survey for a longer period of time. I believe in Sarah Conance's pattern, I was, over 90% of the people that responded were program choice parents. So we got good feedback from our program choice people about the program choice itself. You know, these are hard decisions, but this is a good, solid educational decision. You're going to keep the program in play. It gives it the strongest chance to survive, in my opinion. You can't have classes of six and seven and eight kids if that's the situation. And when I look at the numbers, you have, I wouldn't say over the last five years, at least three, three of the grade levels have decreased in enrollment. Two have stayed slightly the same, and one is slightly up by a couple. Right now, when I look at Harrisburg, we have 13 in kindergarten, 23 in first grade, 15 in second grade, 15 in third grade, and six and fourth grade, and 13 in fifth grade. It makes no sense to continue, and I can't take the Harrisburg kids and put them in Cox Mill because they don't have the room. So the logical decision is, let's take the Cox Mill kids and bring them down to Harrisburg and have the program there, and let's try and really build the strong program. Transportation was brought up at this, this time too. Well, that is an equity, that's an equity problem across the district, and we, we've talked for many months about the hub stops and trying to get those better, and Dr. Bowers and his team did some good incremental changes. They should improve that. We don't provide transportation for program choice. And, and you got to remember, program choice is a, should be a magnet type of a thing where we have a program somewhere, and that magnet is drawing kids to the program. Not every school just creates programs. We put them in place, and it's at my school, and I get it, and the rest don't. So there's a lot that goes into this. I know I said a lot there in a very few, in a very quick amount of time, but emphasizing this is not going away, and we are not going to recommend eliminate it, and that has never been the intention. The intention is for its survival and to look at it from a holistic standpoint, considering all the variables and all the moving parts, so that we can keep it alive and make sure that it's a strong, sustainable program. But it is a financial mistake and an equity mistake to keep two programs going when you don't need it. The numbers don't back it up. The data doesn't back it up. The survey doesn't back it up. And I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for that explanation. I do want to make sure that as a school board, as a school district, we are committed to Mandarin and, and take the recommendation that was given tonight, which is advertising and sharing the benefits. Because the reality is, is if we don't provide transportation, then that eliminates people's ability to make the choice. You have to make sacrifices if you take it out of their home school. I get that. But if you're committed to Mandarin because you know what the benefits are, you might be willing to make that sacrifice. I know that that's a big ask for people, but I, I do strongly believe in the benefits of Mandarin, to the point where I, when we signed up for it, we thought it was going to be in our home middle school. And then guess what? They built a new middle school, and they put it there. And so, yes, I do drive my child, well, I take her to a hub stop every day, and then when she has sports or when she has the orthodontist, which, I mean, middle school, you go to the orthodontist almost every month. Just, just know that. So I'm going back and forth to a school that is not five minutes from my house. It is 25 to 35 minutes, depending on traffic. So, but we're committed to Mandarin because we've seen the benefits of it. So, yes, I would like for us to make a commitment to Mandarin, commitment to Spanish, showing the benefits of, of dual language. Several people referenced my, my comment about your brain being on fire. Your brain being on fire is a good thing. And, and there, I do think the value is worth the sacrifices. I also recognize that I have the privilege to say that, and not everyone in our community does. And so when you say it's a choice, it's not actually a choice for everybody. So I appreciate this conversation. I appreciate, again, the commitment. And again, while I, I understand, and I empathize with the parents who spoke tonight, I'm super impressed that they found the Mandarin program and moved here for it. There's bigger considerations than just keeping it around the corner from your house. And I, it's not that it falls on deaf ears, but Mandarin is worth the investment if you can make it.
Dr. Kavicki?
Yeah, and I appreciate those comments. I will agree with the comments that were said, stated this evening, that it does have academic benefits. It does, 100%, and that's research proven. The other thing I want to remind the board is, it wasn't just Mandarin. We're also eliminating a Spanish program at Rocky River because of the numbers and the data. And, you know, to, to, we are, we are not, and we will not ever advocate to get rid of it, Mandarin or Spanish. And Dr. Parker has worked at great length to strengthen this program because the way we're delivering it now is much better and continues to get better. You can talk 60-40, 50-50, 80-20, meaning English and the foreign language you're speaking. We're actually now using the research and the data and Dr. Parker's expertise from her experiences to strengthen our programs. I don't want to say take umbrage with the advertisement, but we, we will and will promote more, but we have the program choice fair. We have it in October, a three-month process where we enroll. We advertise the heck out of it when we're doing it. I, I just, sometimes you can bring the horse to water, right? You can't make them drink. But, and I'm not saying, I don't mean that in a sarcastic manner. You know, critics are, critics are everywhere, I guess, and I don't even know if they were critics. They were just advocating. I get that. But we do do a good job promoting this program and all the other program choice programs as well. But I will certainly be mindful of that when we move forward to make sure that we advertise all of our program choices in a stronger fashion moving forward. So I thank you for that.
Anything else on this side? Ms. Mills?
So with the capacity issues at Cox Mill, unless something happens on that side of the county, this is not coming back even if demand changes next year or the following year, not to Cox Mill.
Yeah, I think the demand, no, I think that's a great question, right? Who knows what five years holds? You know, maybe Cox Mill, it has capacity. If they, enrollment to grow up, I would say right now and in the near future, no, Greg. We'd have to find another school that could handle the, the enrollment numbers from a capacity standpoint. That's accurate.
Okay, so second, how many students can Harrisburg accommodate in that program before you start waitlisting students?
That is an excellent question. So right now, we're looking at utilization numbers, so specifically how many are interested internally within their neighborhood zone, as well as specifically what we call magnet students. So that is going to range year to year, but we feel very confident that at this point, based on projections for this upcoming year, we can fill all of the seats based on the current interest. Additionally, from there, we will work year to year, just as we do with every other program choice program, to look at building utilization and capacity numbers in terms of projections with new neighborhoods.
Dr. Kavicki, you want to speak?
No, sir.
Sam?
I just wanted to point out, I think if Ms. Fitzwater, our EC director, were here, she'd remind us that our EC programming, centralized placement, these kind of decisions are made every year at that level. So this is not a one-off. This, our program has to go with the kids, and our teachers have to go with the kids. So I just want to, this is, and I have a feeling we're going to be looking at program choice down the road as well. This is like the first of other programming decisions we're going to have to make.
Okay, anybody else here? My question had to be, one of the things that they said that they didn't get enough notice. It was a surprise to them. Is there a way we could have done, done that better?
Well, again, I think we put the survey out there for a month. We, we did talk with parents, and the interesting thing about the survey was most of the people that responded were program choice parents.
A survey that we were phasing out the program or?
A survey asking for their input before we made any decisions.
So the phasing out was a possibility on the survey or is that?
No, it was not. It was not. So that's a valid point.
I will also say, we intentionally worked as a part of our strategic plan to solicit feedback from our school improvement plans two years ago. And I previously presented to the Board of Education in the spring that we would be looking at future possibilities of consolidating a Mandarin pipeline, KE. So that was presented to the board. That was shared with the public, and that was also shared with the community members.
These folks didn't get that or didn't acknowledge that. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, keeping.
Fair point.
Yep.
Parents are invested in our school system with their kids and like this program. But the program, but again, the program's going to be alive.
There's, right. It's a phase, phase to a different location. I get that, and I understand that. I mean, it makes, the justification makes sense to me, but the parents and the families should have, I mean, these are smart people. They can come up with.
Sure.
Potential alternatives that we, maybe we didn't think of. But that would be my point. My other question is, I think you said for our planning, our planning meeting coming up next week, we are going to talk about program choice. Is that right?
Yes, we have, we have more information on some recommendations we're going to make to the board in the near future. So, yes, we will be talking about that in the retreat.
Okay, so what motion do we need?
To approve this recommendation.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the recommendation for the program choice.
I make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Treadway?
I second it.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any further discussions? Okay, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, that motion passes. And we do have a need, it's a long night, but we do have a need for closed session. Hopefully it won't be too long, but we will say goodbye to our public watching online, and again, thank you for your interest and participation.